...in the business hall with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Hanson.
Here.
Shumway.
Here.
Henry. Henry. Shumway.
Here.
Schuster.
Here.
Somerville.
Here.
Vitale. Absent. Weaver.
Here.
Pierce.
Here.
Polikas.
Here.
Seven present, Your Honor, two absent.
Thank you. Okay, next item is a public hearing. This is a public hearing on original ordinance number 1952 amending various sections of the Laramie Municipal Code related to parking. Uh, City Clerk, would you please read the notice?
A public hearing will be held in the City Council and City Council chambers at 406 Iverson Street, Laramie, Wyoming at 6:30 PM on August 25th, 2016. The public is invited to offer comments on parking regulations.
Thank you. Are there any members in the audience, uh, members of the public that wish us to comment on this ordinance during this public hearing? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and move on to the next item. Next item is announcements from city staff. City Manager?
Mayor, there are no announcements.
All right. Next item is consideration changes to the agenda. Vice Mayor?
So I move that the following changes to the agenda be approved. On the consent agenda, we are adding an item eight I, number five. We are scheduling a meeting, a special meeting for August 23rd for fee-for-service agreement, and our meeting is at 6 o'clock.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Schuster. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Now, if I follow the agenda...
We still have to do the rest of the consent agenda.
Yeah, it's not ordered.
That's changed.
Okay, well, that's not the way it's stated here, so, Vice Mayor?
Okay, so I move that the agenda be set as changed.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second by Counselor Somerville. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion carries. And I'll, once more, Vice Mayor?
I move that the consent agenda be approved and that each specific action on the consent agenda be approved as indicated.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second by Counselor Shumway. City Clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Hanson.
Yes.
Henry. Absent. Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
Vitale, absent. Pierce.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
Seven yeses, two absent, zero nos.
That motion carries. All right. Uh, item number six, disclosures by council, City Council members. Does, do any council members have a conflict of interest concerning items we'll be discussing tonight? Okay, seeing none, I'll move on to the regular agenda, which is item number 10. Uh, Counselor Pierce or Vice Mayor?
Yes, so I move to approve original ordinance number 1949 amending LMC 15.14.050 landscaping and screening standards based on findings of fact and conclusions of law, and note a public hearing was held on July 5, 2016.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second by Counselor Somerville. Um, I'll turn it over to city staff.
Mr. Blom.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, uh, this is second reading of the proposed landscaping changes. Uh, back on July 28th and on August 1st, the city staff, myself, hosted several council members on a tour to a different, uh, groupings of sites around the city to sort of look at what the existing landscaping ordinance produces in the way of landscaping, um, and to also detail some of the flexibility that occurred with some of our current developments. Also on that tour, we did look at one of the established sites, Reynolds Crossing, and we, uh, looked at that as, that's what landscaping looks like in 16 years. Um, specifically with Reynolds Crossing, we looked, looked at each buffer yard, ones on the north, ones on the south, east and west, as to how they developed over time. Um, with these developments and in this memo, you can see that there are three bullet points. Number one, it identifies whether or not it meets the specific, uh, code requirements. Number two, it discusses how those, how these landscaping amendments would result in reductions. The easiest one for everyone to really grasp was looking at Reynolds Crossing because that's when the landscaping's mature, and that's openly what we're planning for in the future, is to make sure those buffers are established and look good in the future. Um, as noted at Reynolds Crossing right now, as our current landscaping, uh, code is written, it does not conform to the site perimeter landscaping buffer yards. Um, in fact, when we started looking at the different, uh, buffer yards surrounding that use, uh, we did see that, uh, if this were adopted as is, several of the trees would disappear, uh, but nothing that would be, um, considered overall major. Um, so that, that's sort of a little summary of the tour and, and the memo here. And in addition, I did pass out this, uh, one-page document here. This was actually prepared by Roger Strube, he was the Chair of the Laramie Chamber Business Alliance's Community Development Liaison Committee, that's the CDLC. Um, what we do, uh, with the CDLC is we work with developers, we work with engineers and other representatives from society, from the development community, uh, to try to work on changes to the code to make it easier to use and easier to understand. Uh, I will let Roger talk a little bit more about their purpose and, uh, talk a little bit more about this, this memo here, if you guys request. Um, with that, I will bring questions you may have regarding this landscaping ordinance. Uh, staff is still recommending approval of this as presented. Um, if you wish to make any amendments, um, you can let us know and I will work on trying to craft those accordingly.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Counselor Hanson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, just, I, I, I thought about this because I was absent, of course, but I read your whole documentation, so I pretty well, I think I'm up to, uh, to a current, uh, discussion. Um, and the pictures that, of course, you showed are very impressive. Some of them, you know, show the compliance to a changed order, a change, and some of them, uh, the current ones. So, uh, I think maybe, uh, you're making the point that your, the question of discussion, of course, is always, should the larger ones have a, larger projects have a lesser responsibility or something like that, and I think some of us are unhappy with that. Uh, is there another way of looking at this? Because there was a statement, of course, that landscaping should not, uh, be more than 2% of the project value. I think that was sort of a statement that came up. Uh, would that be a way to address this, uh, rather than, uh, you know, the larger, uh, places having a reduction, uh, of, of their, uh, of their commitment to landscaping? Uh, it just occurred to me when I read this, you know, because, uh, I think your statistics show that the landscaping costs were somewhere between, I think, 1 and 3% or something like that i- in, in your outline there. Uh, I, I'm still not happy with the idea because, I mean, we, in this country, believe that everybody should be equal before the law, you know, and, and, uh, this is sort of flying in the face of that. Uh, is, would there be another way to dis- discuss this from that particular point of view, uh, making it 2% of the value? Or is that unfair, too? I, I just don't know. Uh, just an observation on my part. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Questions? Or should we go, uh, and call, why don't we, why don't we ask Mr. Strube to come up, and then we can either direct our questions to either staff or to Mr. Strube?
Can we ask him before we get started?
What, what did you, pardon me?
So, before you get started, Ed, maybe I'm just, what is the CDLC?
The CDLC is the Community Development Liaison Committee.
Thank you. I mean, I, I was, okay.
Since we can't say that without stumbling over the words, it's the CDLC.
Okay.
It used to be called the UDC Committee.
See, that's what got me, okay.
The Code Committee. Um, and we changed the name because we gained some objectives in our mission statement, so, we, and I can explain those if you would like.
Thank you for asking that question.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. So, um, I am the Chairman of the CDLC Committee, which is a committee that works under, um, actually, as, as an, I'm an advisory board member for the Laramie Economic Development Corporation, which is under the larger umbrella of the Laramie Chamber Business Alliance. And we have been working for some years to try and get the UDC code, um, to, to get through the code and, and, and correct some deficiencies that have come through the citizens of Laramie to our committee. And, and that committee consists of developers, engineers, contractors, of which I have done all three. Um, it also, um, has some, some other people on it, a geologist, a UW professor, and what we were looking to do is take the original code that was developed, which is quite onerous, that's an opinion from the community, uh, to work with, and quite costly. So, the, the very first item on that bullet list is, is what we, what our committee started out to do, and, and I'd like to read it. It's work with the City of Laramie to make changes in the UDC as a living document, so over time, we're going to continue to work on this, to make it more user-friendly, business-friendly, so that it is more cost-effective for local and new businesses to make improvements to property or build new facilities. The basic premise is that building codes should be easy to follow and enforce, and the enforcement part is very important, and should provide reasonable protection of the public interest and safety, and have reasonable cost and time implications for the benefit of the economic development in Laramie. So that was our original mission. And so we started on the code several years ago, and, and we have actually taken out a large amount of that code over time. And even though you're addressing one item tonight, we look at as, as a whole thing. We are trying to have a, an inclusive document that considers all of the steps of development or building or improving a business, business together. So, we, even though they come to you in, in single pieces, which they have to, it's, it's about looking at the whole code and, and making it more conducive to businesses. Um, recently, we merged with another committee that came out of a strategic planning session from LCBA. We'll have all those acronyms in there many times. And, and we, we, uh, City Manager Jordan and I were on that committee. Uh, that committee has kind of fused part of its, uh, mission with this new CDLC committee. And the two, the two, two objectives that come out of that is to work with the City of Laramie to make the permitting for building and development process a time-effective and positive experience. This includes developing LCBA liaison help on applications for businesses and developers. And this is an idea that I think probably Manager Jordan and I probably initiated, and, and it's part of a, it's part of a thing to, to have people come away from the process of developing or improving businesses with the City of Laramie with a positive experience, so that they can spread that, that news to the rest of the, of the community, the business community, and people that are coming into town. And we all know that if you leave a bad impression, they tell 10 people. If you leave a good impression, they tell one. So that's, that's the thing we're fighting. The other item is, is to work with all local governments and quasi-government agencies, so eventually we'll encompass not only the city, but the county, the state, the school district, UW, others, to facilitate responsible, cost-and-time-effective development within community standards to be, to the benefit of the economic development. So, we are not proposing that, that codes be shut aside. We, we believe that they need to be there, and they need to protect the public interest and the public safety. And we believe, as an example for tonight, we believe that there should be landscaping. The idea of, of having a sliding scale for larger properties came through several sources. One source was the school district, developing 50 or 35-acre sites, uh, getting their money from the state of Wyoming, which is very tightly held and very tightly given out. And, and even though landscaping as a general rule is, is 2% of a project, and that doesn't sound like much, if you couple it up with everything else, it's a consideration, again, of this, some of the parts is the whole. And then the other, the other, the other thing is, is we, there are other communities in the state of Wyoming, Colorado and Montana that, that also have, have already done this and tried this. And it's, it's, um, you know, I've, I've, I've heard comments, um, around the community about, um, you know, the larger developers should have the money to, to do the landscaping. Um, I will tell you from experience that if you have a $50,000 project, money is tight. If you have a $50 million project, money is still tight. So, um, so, so again, we, we want to, th- this is one step in a process where we've already done many steps. Uh, we've developed sliding scales in other areas, uh, triggering systems. An example is parking lots. Um, if you are improving 25% under or under of a parking lot, you don't evoke any, any new, other code changes. If you're doing 50%, then they look at the landscaping. If you're doing 75, then they look at all the landscaping. And so we're just trying to get, well, there's many projects that have been left behind in, in Laramie because they couldn't put all this together and they couldn't make it all work. So that's, that's really what we're trying to do. A classic example is, uh, LCCC parking lot. Um, they had a, a program to, to increase their parking lot because their students were parking ever at Mountain West Farm Bureau, and that was under all the old code. When we got done with them, they had a $150,000 parking lot project and $150,000 landscaping project because what, what, they evoked all the rules and they came in. So, so again, it's, it's, this is, this is one item. I, I asked you to kind of think of it as, as, as a whole. It's one step in the process to just make development and building and business improvement in Laramie an easier process, a positive process, and, and help us grow. Any questions? Questions? Counselor Somerville?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Um, so, a specific question in dealing with school districts and athletic fields. So I understand, if I remember correctly, that athletic fields and turf does not plant, does not count towards any landscaping. Am I still correct in that? Okay, so I, I was curious about that, in the fact that there's all these beautiful fields and that they didn't get any points for landscaping. And I just wanted to know if that has come up. I know, the school's probably a special project, but if you can think of any other examples where any athletic fields or, or pieces didn't get landscaping points.
Um, I, I can't.
Or anything else along those lines.
I can't because we're, we're, I mean, we've built the first new fields in Laramie since 19, whenever. Uh, I think maybe the junior high in 79. So, so, so I can't. Um, you know, one of the things I will tell you about the high school is, is, and I realize that's, you know, that's the largest project ever undertaken in Laramie, even including the university. Um, and when you're given, you're given a certain amount of money based off program space. We passed a bond issue to add space. And when the project was bid, it was 15, still $15 million over budget. And the legislature found us $8 million. So we still had to cut $7 million out of a project, and a project that was already designed. And that was approximately, for the building itself, that's just under 10% of the project. And so when you're looking for $7 million to cut out of a project that's already designed without cutting program space, which is for students, which is, that's your mission, it's very, very difficult. It took us six months to find that money. And we, we worked with the City of Laramie under the code at that time, and, and they had a discretion, uh, to, to be able to, to alleviate some of the landscape by 9.9%. It had to be under 10%. And we went through that process. Uh, we've gone through a subsequent process. Uh, but when you're looking at that project, the landscaping, um, altogether, not including the fields, is $1.9 million. And when you're looking for $7 million, you know, if you can cut a half a million dollars or $400,000 or $300,000 out of landscaping, that, that's, that's, that's a big item. And, uh, so, so it, even though it's, like I say, it's only 2% of the project, it does, when, when you're doing those kind of deliberations, and I assure you that everybody that has a development project goes through those kinds of deliberations, it all adds up. And that's why I keep saying, you know, don't just look at landscaping, look, look at the whole picture. Thank you. Counselor Shumway?
Thank you. Mr. Strube, uh, thank you for all the work that you did with this. This is, this is good for us to look at. Uh, I just want to make a comment, and you tell me if, if I'm kind of, uh, thinking the way you were thinking, or if I'm maybe not quite there. Um, there, with, with this proposal, there's standards that we expect any builder, any developer to adhere to as far as landscaping requirements. Now, there is, there is an option for an allowance that would be, you know, uh, anywhere between, which we see here, anywhere up to 20, I think up to 25%, which, if it seems reasonable. But let me, let me just say this, and you tell me if I'm, if I'm off. Let's suppose that the landscaping for a project as big as the high school would be $2 million in landscaping, which would be trees, shrubs, lawns, and things like that. That, that seems to be a lot of landscaping to me, just an awful lot of it. Now, if the university were to build a five-story building and had a very small footprint, and had to put in $2 or $3 million in landscaping, when, when it, really for beautification purposes, it should be less than that, isn't there an allowance by what we have before us that says, as long as, as it meets the standards and the requirements for beautification and landscaping, that can be done? It's not just, you absolutely have to spend 2% of the entire project.
That's correct. That's, that's just the way it turns out.
Yeah, what we have before us, then, seems reasonable. And then we're not, I don't think we're favoring small projects with big projects. We're just saying, why have a, a set price that says 2% or so many, so many trees and shrubs per linear foot or something like that, when what we really are looking for is beautification in the community. And, and I think, you know, with our staff, they want to make sure that, we, we took the tour to say, you know, we, if we would have applied this to the very letter of the law, it would have been overforested. I mean, there'd be too many shrubs, too many trees, things like that. But if we can just have the staff look at it and say, what would be acceptable to our standard, then that's what, that's what they would reduce it to using the allowance which is, is before us.
Correct. You know, as an, as an example, the, the, the high school site has just under 500 trees and just under 1,000 shrubs. And so, and it's, and it's nice. Um, but if, uh, and I don't mean to be sarcastic here, but if there were 50 less trees and 100 less shrubs, would anybody notice that the corridor was any less beautiful? No, they would not. So there's, 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 there's a built-in, it's, it's built-in discretion. And one of the things that we, that we look at, um, in, in that committee, um, and, and we really are on, on, also on the side of the city, if, if something comes through the city, they have to enforce the rules that they have on the table at the time, whether they're reasonable or not. That's what they have to deal with. And we try to explain this to people. They don't, they rarely understand that. But, so what we're trying to do is we're, we're trying to help the city have the tools to have some latitude in certain situations to maybe be a little more reasonable. And, and so that, that's, that's the other component, is let's, let's give planning and engineering and code administration the tools. Let's give them the, the ordinances and the tools and the code to be able to make reasonable decisions and not just have to throw their hands up and say, well, that's what I have on the books and I can't do anything about it, which is a true statement. If, if you don't have reasonable codes, they're still, they're, they're still forced to comply with them because that's what they have. So we're trying to give them the tools.
Thank you, Mr. Strube. And what I see before us is what you have explained to us.
Correct.
That there is some latitude, but without going beyond the standard of what we're expecting for beautification. Thank you.
Other questions? Counselor Hanson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Coming back to my original idea, would it be reasonable with also what Counselor Shumway said, to say normally landscaping should be in the range of, let's say, 1 to 2% and, uh, with a variance possibility up to, and let's say 25 or 30% for, at the discretion of the staff? That gives the staff sort of a wide latitude, but it doesn't do away with landscaping. Uh, you know, something of that nature. I'm just hung up on the idea of when you're bigger, you're held to a lesser standard or something like that. That hangs me up somehow.
And I think, I, I, I don't think that's the case. Uh, I would hate to see you establish a percentage of costs.
Uh-huh.
Because, uh, prices change over time, and what if you had a project where 2% didn't meet your minimum standards? Then you've locked yourself into a number.
Yeah.
So, so I think if, if you're uncomfortable with that idea, um, I, I think that, that the committee would support some words to maybe enforce that, that, that it's a, it's a case-by-case evaluation at the discretion of the, the city, but to give them the latitude to be able to move within that, I don't think the committee would be against something like that. Again, it's a duel, but I, but I would hate to see you establish a percentage because, um, if you had a smaller project that had, uh, uh, you know, four buffer yards, it might be 5% of the project, and then you're short, you're shorting yourself. Because it's, it's plant numbers that we're working with and, and plantings that we're working with. And I, I think that's a, a good way to do that, and, and I, I wouldn't want to restrict that. That would be the opinion of the committee.
And, and that kind of thinking, Your Honor, would be more to my liking, you know, to have more latitude, because projects are always individual. Uh, you know, you showed us some projects that are, uh, for example, uh, bordered by places where they can't put in any landscaping, so they put in more on the other side, uh, which is already sort of a latitudinal question, you know, as to how to arrange it.
Well, and the, the other thing we're, we're trying to do is we're trying to protect the, our corridors. So, if, let's go back to the high school as an example. You have two sides of the high school that are bordered by streets.
Streets.
And Boulder is a collector and Turner Drive is a, is a, is a local street. And, and there were, there's literally not enough room on those corridor paths to place all of the trees that you have to, to have to meet the numbers. So you have to use the whole site. So, so we have trees at the back of the site and the side of the site adjoining the city's property and internal. And so, um, um, I think the main thing is, is that if, if you have latitude, uh, you want to make sure, and, and, and planning already does this, they already do this, you want to make sure that the looks of the corridors are protected. So as an example, the school district had to go back to the state for more money, but they put sod along Boulder and Turner because it's instantly green, and they did hydro seeding and drilling other places to save money because eventually it will come in, but it takes, you know, natural grass takes three years to take hold. So again, that corridor was protected. Um, but we had, you know, with larger space, you have the latitude to move some trees and things around, but maybe not always, depending on the footprint of the building or, or whatever. So, again, it's, it's, it's giving them the tools to be able to be reasonable. Thank you. Counselor Schuster?
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, Counselor Somerville, then Counselor Schuster.
Um, thank you, Ms. Mayor. Okay, so, this isn't necessarily for Mr. Strube, um, but I appreciate, uh, all the work you've done as well. Um, so I wanted to make a couple of comments to counsel. I don't know how many of you guys went on the tour, but it was definitely worth my time. Um, so a couple of things that I noticed, uh, speaking to buffer yards, because there's some significant buffer yard reductions in here as well. I'm really on the fence about those. Um, there, you, we were... We were pointed out, like on the Church of Christ, there's trees and landscaping, you know, on the backside, and there's nothing back there. Well, there's nothing back there now, but in 10 years, there may be something there because it's developable land. So I think we need to keep that in mind, as well as protecting the corridors, you have to prepare for that future development. And you only get one shot at this when the developer builds this lot. We don't get to go back to somebody in 20 years and say, oh, there's somebody behind you, now you got to put up a buffer yard. It doesn't work that way. One of the things that I think I was most struck about is going through the proposed reductions in some of these with the slide, if you add the sliding scale and the 10% administrative adjustment, and then the additional, depending on what you were talking about, about a third reduction total in landscaping, some of these sites that we visited literally would have 70% less landscaping. So they would have one tree on the face, or two trees, instead of the six or seven that are there. If you add all of these deductions and put them all together, that's a really, really scary, really, really low number to me, and certainly not what I would be looking for.
May I say something?
Yeah.
So though you can't use this deduction on that type of a site, if the site's already that small, you're not going to get this 25% reduction. So that only comes into play on much larger sites.
On much larger sites.
So you're not going to get that reduction, that cumulative reduction on that smaller site. Does that make sense?
Honorable mayor and counsel, I just wanted to provide some clarification real quick on the sliding scale reduction. Number one, the amendment to it is really easy, is to strike that Section B its entirety on page nine. So that's how you do it if you need direction for a motion. Number two, the sliding scale is only going to apply to the buffer yards. We're still going to have requirements for what is usually the more noticeable landscaping you see. You'll still have your internal landscape islands in the parking lot, there'll still be requirements for trees within the parking lots. And I believe the trees is, it's one tree for every 20 parking spaces. You'll also have a requirement that for every 20, every 50, or every 10 parking spaces, you have approximately 20 square feet of internal landscape islands that you would have to have. So you're still going to get your green spaces on your larger developments in their parking areas and surrounding their parking areas. So really, the sliding scale is only for the exterior buffer yards. And yes, you are correct, there could be some pretty dramatic reductions. But the hope is that the larger parking lots that would surround those could make up some of those differences. So really, with the way the landscaping ordinance is written and the way it's a menu of options to satisfy the points, it really is tough to envision what's going to happen. But if you do look at the table and the way the units are calculated, there, for our most, our most intense buffer yards, the ones you see more often, the L2s and the L3s, those do require that some of those units be trees. And those will at least round up to two or three trees in most cases on those smaller sites. So hopefully that just answers a little bit of the question about how that sliding scale works.
Could you very quickly give a definition of what a buffer yard is?
The buffer yard really is just the eight, or the five to, or three to 12-foot width between the back of the sidewalk and the development itself. Development itself could be the building, it could be the parking lot, it could be athletic fields, those types of items. So it's just that perimeter around the edge of the site.
Your Honor, what you have at the new movie, at the movie theater right now, what they put in? Okay.
Honorable mayor and counsel Hanson, yes, is exactly what they put along Rainbow Street.
Yeah.
And actually, that tree-lined buffer yard there exceeds the city's current code requirements for an L2 buffer yard, which is very common on major streets by two trees today.
Counselor Schuster. Did you have more?
Yeah, I apologize.
Keep going.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So I am definitely not a fan of the sliding scale. I would like to pull that out completely. One of the things that I am supportive of more flexibility for staff in the appropriate areas, I'm also, I was quite impressed by the movie theater development that we went and visited. And compared to, I think everybody's familiar with that theater and what it looked like before, and now what it looks like, it is night and day difference. That's our landscaping code with some administrative alternatives for public art, and that's the mural there. So what I'd like to see, and what I'd like to request an amendment be worked up for, is adding more points for some of these non-green alternatives, whether it's public art or big rocks, or whatever that list needs to be, to give people some additional options if they don't want to do all trees, they're concerned about irrigation, whatever that is, and add more points for that, so that somebody has more options, per se. One of the things that I'm really concerned about overall with this ordinance is, I want to be fair to development and businesses, and, but we really want to continue to improve the look of Laramie. So I called a couple of other cities in Cheyenne and Colorado, and surprise, surprise, the number one complaint that those community development departments receive is, nobody likes the landscaping requirements. And they're all different, they're all substantially different from pillar to post, all over, and nobody likes the landscaping requirements. So whatever we set the floor at, people are going to complain about the floor. So if we do these reductions, which I think are way too drastic, I think that in a couple of years, we're going to be back in here and people are going to be complaining about the floor. And they think it's too expensive, and they think it's too burdensome, and it's too cumbersome. But what I see is that the landscaping code that we have has made dramatic improvements in our corridors and our developments in Laramie, and after having driven across the state, I would take what we have here 10 times to anywhere else in Wyoming. So I think that there's some good amendments that I'd like to propose. I said this, I would like to take the sliding scale out, I'd like to give staff a little bit more flexibility and add more flexibility for alternatives that aren't green, and go from there and see where we're at. But I don't, I'm not even particularly in favor of the, like, the 1/3 and 1/4 reductions. I think it's too stark. When we went by every site and we looked at what the options were, what was there, and what would be taken out, it was just too much. It was a serious contrast, so. And I know that, we can't hear Counselor Henry, that she was pretty much along the same lines.
Thank you. Counselor Schuster.
Thank you. There is that availability right now, because I'm on the planning commission. So when someone has a problem with that, they come to us. The flexibility, I don't know how fair it is. Wyoming State Bank, when they did their addition, they couldn't add more trees and shrub. There was an area. So they did a payment in lieu, and I believe it went to trees across the street on Grand Avenue, which helped the beautification on that. Right as they got done, the rec center did their improvement, and I asked Paul Harrison, because he's not here, and he said, yes, we will be increasing the landscaping at the rec center. I haven't seen it happen yet, but supposedly that's in the plan, so that the same amount that the Wyoming State Bank, that the city will have to abide by too. So, and they could use a little bit more outside the rec center. It is a little bit bleak. So hopefully that will be enforced equally, since we need to live by our own laws, too. I'm sad that the downtown has a completely different scale, and I think that they should be just like Wyoming State Bank, and any improvements they make, they can write that check in lieu of. And then somewhere in the corridor, it can be improved, because it's tough to say, well, we're going to build this here, and we don't have to do anything. Or we're going to remodel this entire building, we don't have to do anything because we're downtown. So I think it ought to be equal across the board, and that all parties involved will be equal. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments by counsel? Counselor Weaver.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Mayor. I was thinking about Counselor Somerville's comments about the floor, and how as time goes on, those could be, those comments could then just morph and evolve into saying, these are too burdensome, or too onerous. I'm not going to be on counsel much longer, but when that comes up, if I was on counsel then, what I think I would say is that the current, at least what we're talking about right now, no amendments posed, the current code was created in tandem with our Laramie-Chamber Business Alliance, and that input was received to adjust it, and that we took those considerations of development cost concerns very seriously. And that was why we adjusted the code in the first place, and that's why we would be unwilling to enact further adjustments if it were to come relatively soon after these adjustments. That would be my perspective. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Pierce, or Vice Mayor Pierce.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Roger and his group that oftentimes comes in, come in here and educate me and the rest of us, and bring great suggestions before us. So thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Yes. Counselor Hanson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Hearing all this, I think it's sort of like squaring the circle. We're trying to regulate something that seems to be, in the end, almost unregulatable. There ought to be landscaping, okay, but every project is so different because of the configuration. Counselor Schuster pointed that out. Some of them don't have room for landscaping, et cetera. What do we do there? It almost strikes me that when a new project comes in, maybe the best thing is to have the landscaping addressed and approved by a landscaping committee. This seems to work in this particular instance, that's the best way, or maybe you ought to stretch yourself a little more and put a little more in there. From what I hear, it seems every time we make a rule, there is a yes, but it won't work in this particular instance, et cetera. So I don't know where to go with this, quite frankly. I see the point, you know, that it's really what we want to do here is give some latitude, and I think we should give more latitude to the staff here to decide, this is acceptable in this particular instance, and go with it, okay? Rather than try to regulate this. It reminds me coming back to, all of a sudden, green roofs were not acceptable, or that wasn't acceptable, et cetera. It becomes sort of a nightmare to make that possible, to work that out. So I'm for more latitude to the staff to say, this is acceptable to do. What the pictures you showed, for example, at the credit union, it looked perfect to me, you know, it was fine. Doesn't meet code, but it's a fine solution, okay?
Senior Planner Bloom, would you address the latitude question?
Honorable mayor and city council, just several months ago, we went through a unified development code amendment process where we increased our minor administrative modification percentage from 10% to 20%. What that allows is for an administrative variance essentially. So if you have any quantitative standard, so a number, the number of landscape units, number of trees, number of parking lots, what that does is it allows for staff to make an educated decision based on evidence presented to staff by the developer. In the example of Laramie High School, they actually applied for their development permit prior to that 20% being enacted, and at that time, only 10% was allowed. The high school was granted a relief administratively in the amount of 10%. As Roger had indicated earlier, they planted 500 trees and 1,000 bushes. So essentially, that saved them just over 50 trees and just over 100 bushes on their site. So that was something that was accomplished administratively. So we do have that flexibility. I have to caution everyone that the flexibility just doesn't mean it's permission to skip out on 20%. They have to have some type of reason for that flexibility. Typically, what we look for is a landscaped architect, a horticulturist, or someone with expertise in the industry to give us their professional opinion and say, yes, these trees are going to crowd each other, we'd like to see a reduction here, we have an unusual bedrock feature in this location that's going to prevent the roots from going down. Honorable mayor and counsel Hanson, it was touched upon about creating a landscaping committee to review and approve different landscaping plans. In staff's eyes, with a landscaping committee, I really don't think we have the local expertise to enforce that, because the few landscape architects we do have in town are busy preparing the landscape plans, so we'd likely run into a lot of different landscaping challenges that have a lot of conflicts of interest. In addition, we would run the risk of being more arbitrary in decision-making, because there wouldn't be a factual basis on that. So I'd like to steer clear of that landscaping committee. In specific cases where we have a development that might not be perfect for a zone district, one that is permissible by the conditional use permit, for example, like your businesses in residential districts, those type of developments, we do have the planning commission, which, upon staff's review, which includes the parks department's comments, the arborist's comments, all of that. We can look at different developments, and we can look at what they're proposing to provide screening and buffering, and hopefully address some of the landscaping issues in that public forum. Just to answer the question quickly, we do have the administrative flexibility, up to 20%. At this time, I think it's really new. I'd like to continue to experiment with that before we start introducing additional flexibility. And if we do see problems in this building season, we could move forward and try to address it in another round of amendments, because as noted, this is a living, breathing document, and will occupy our time for a long time.
Thank you. Counselor Shumway.
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't want to make the group that put this together feel like that we're just passing over their proposal that they have before us. What I see is, in the proposal we have before us, there, no one gets a pass, no one gets a pre-pass, say, you don't have to do landscaping, or your landscaping can just be the bare minimum. We're not suggesting that. The other thing is, I think that there's, there is here where, you know, where, if there were a deficient potential in a landscaping thing, then there's, you know, then there's the option for us to increase what would be there. But I don't see that. I see what we say is there is a standard which seems to be appropriate, and then when there's excessive plantings that seem to be just crowding, there's the option for that to have a modest reduction. But I don't want to go in and just throw out their proposal that they have before us, because I think it not only provides for us a reasonable standard that would be for beautification, but also there is the option so that we don't make it to where it's, you know, so overburdened with plantings and all the things that would go into it, that there's not some option for the staff to go in and say, there is a reasonable reduction that would still keep the beautification factor in there. I don't know that I'm going to support any of the amendments that come forward, because I think what we have before us is a great place to start, so that we can in the future see if there is deficiencies, and then, this again is a living document, we can come back and fix it. And again, I appreciate the work that's before us. As I've looked at this, I think that there's every piece that's needed to be there, sufficient standard, and also options to make any corrections where there's a need with the option for us to make improvements as we go into the future. But I don't see that big deficiency that's being expressed here to where there's some people that are getting a free pass. That's just not the case. What we have before us is everyone has a requirement. And so, again, I don't know that we need to throw out the proposal we have before us. I think we have something that seems to be very well thought out by people that are very invested in this, and I want to go forward with what we have. So right now, I support what we have before us.
Thank you. I wanted to make a few comments, and then I know there's a couple of the councils that would like to say a few more things, but, you know, I've been involved in this landscaping since the very beginning, when as a community and as a planning commission, we decided we needed something to do with landscaping. And I've said this before, it was, the reason for it is, we didn't have any landscaping, and frankly, Walmart's a good example of no landscaping, okay? And what I want to point out is, so the first project we actually did under the old, old, old landscaping ordinance was Reynolds Crossing. And I And I, I tell you today, you can drive through Reynolds Crossing, and it may not have as many trees as some of our newer places, it may not have as much landscaping, but I defy anyone to drive through that and say, this is not done right. It was done nicely, and it's a good little business park. We've improved it, and I'm okay with that. I went on that tour. What was really great to see is the majority of councilors took that tour, and that tour was very informative because you could visually see what we're doing today and what the proposed changes are, and you can kind of see it. Now, now, the thing I'll point out, there's a couple of things I'll point out about landscaping. First of all, it's not objective, it's subjective. What's, what's too little for one person is too much for someone else. The only thing we really probably can agree upon as, as a group or as a community is we know when we see something that looks nice, okay? I mean, you may not get a majority on it, but you're going to get, you will get a majority, you may not get unanimous. When I visualized, when I went, when I went on that tour with our, with Mr. Bloom, and he kind of explained, okay, if, under the present changes that are proposed, we're going to have X number of trees less on this, on this site or on this frontage, I could visualize it, and it was okay to me. And one of the things that's really difficult to visualize this is you're looking at small trees that are eight, or nine, or 10, or 12 feet apart, and it looks great, okay? And you have a visualization of that. And then you say, okay, take out a couple of those small trees, and it, it will not look the same. It'll look a little different just because of the fact that trees are small. But you, you, you've got to visualize what that plot is going to look like in five years, 10 years, 15 years. And it is a difference. And one of the, one of the things we saw is, is where the bank is down there and the gas station down in Reynolds Crossing. And frankly, there are places on that site where I looked at it and said, yeah, you could eliminate a few trees, and you'd never know the difference. I'll use the theater as an example with those trees. If, when they come to maturity, it, it will be a complete blockage of the theater, there'll be no space between them. It may take 15 years, it may take 20 years, but that's what's going to happen. So, having said all of that, I've come to the conclusion at this point in time that I think the changes that are proposed are very reasonable. I think the other thing we need to, I need to consider as a, as a counselor or as a mayor is there is a cost to each and every one of these trees, and each, and that cost has to be weighed upon, in my mind, to the value. I mean, it's, and it's subjective. I'm going to have a different opinion than someone else is going to have. But I'm, I'm comfortable with the changes are going to be made. I, I don't think we're stripping landscaping out of, out of our community by any, any stretch of the imagination, and frankly, I think we're, we're moving in a good direction. And I also respect the cost of what these various trees and shrubberies and so forth do come to. And maybe the last comment I'd like to make is, keep in mind, we're setting minimum standards. We're not, we're not saying you can only plant this many. We are setting minimum standards, and many of the projects out there, I think the church is an example of that, that we viewed up there on Garfield, they're adding stuff to it. Or they're, they're doing other features that are expensive also. So, I, I think it's reasonable what the changes are, and at this point in time, I certainly am willing to support them. Thank you. And the next person I had on the, was Vice Mayor Pierce.
So, the only thing I'd like to add from what I said before was, I just want to get on the record and say that I do like the idea of art, public art in lieu of, I just want to throw that out there. I don't know if anybody else is supportive of that or not, but I think that would be really interesting, you know, to, to add to, to that, if you can.
Thank, thank you. Counselor Somerville.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So, I had a question, a quick question, and then a comment, kind of along the same lines of Counselor Weaver's comments about if somebody comes at us in a couple of years and says, well, we just changed it. Have there been, besides the administrative adjustments, since the code was adopted, have there been changes?
Honorable Mayor and City Council, yes, there were some changes already that have occurred with the landscaping that have resulted in reductions. The initial landscape buffer yards we had were even more intense than what they are today. We, as staff, casually blame the old consultants that actually can, did the project and claim they must have been done for palm trees or those very vertical trees that you might see in like Las Vegas Henderson or Phoenix, Arizona, those types of, those types of developments. So, there were some reductions that were made. We've been working with those for a while. Those reductions still haven't seemed to, to work. There's still more problems that are still created. That's what has led to these further reductions.
Okay, thank you. And so, along those lines, with, with kind of hearing that, I'd like to bring some amendments forth to this, but I need to work with planning staff on those. So, if the council would be interested in postponing this for two weeks to let me work those out, that's fine. Otherwise, I'll bring them up third reading and just ask that it be put on the regular agenda, just to give everybody warning.
I guess we could do either one of those directions, or we?
Whatever council wants is fine.
You could propose amendments in a, in a general sense, where staff could work on them, and perhaps if we did vote on them at this point in time, we'd find out which ones conceptual-wise have the support, or would you rather postpone?
I'd rather take some time to work them out, to make sure I'm getting what I want.
I'm seeing more, yes, I'm seeing more no's. Counselor Weaver.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. To that topic, I would be, I would be supportive of that, and in a general sense.
Supportive of what?
Of, of the postponement so that amendments could be worked on with staff. I'd rather do those at a, at a second consideration than, than a third consideration. I mean, that's generally our custom. To the topic in general, I like this idea of gearing things towards alternatives, not necessarily trying to swap percentages of this for percentages of that, but putting alternatives in there with some, with some creativity and some, and some thought towards how that might work. That, I think, is, is a more collaborative effort and, and puts that flexibility that we've talked about in there, and I think that, that is usually a more positive process. So, I'd be interested to see what that would look like. Thank you.
Counselor Somerville?
Yes, Ms. Mayor.
Do you want to just, but prior to suggesting a postponement, do you want to, your suggestion would be for you to work with staff and to come up with some amendments that you could bring forward to the whole council?
Yep, and there would be, there would be a couple for consideration, alternatives being one of those, a discussion, an amendment on the sliding scale, and then, I think there was one more, but I need to sit down with staff and make sure that it all works, and I'm getting where we need to go.
Thank you. And I would suggest, I know Counselor Hanson has concerns.
Yeah.
But I would also suggest, rather than just emailing them, that you sit down with staff.
Yeah.
As to the feasibility and the practicalness.
We can do that together.
We can do that.
Of these amendments.
Yeah, that's fine.
Counselor Hanson?
Your Honor, I, I think we should not be misunderstood. I looked at the whole landscaping ordinance. I think there are some very, very good suggestions in there. For example, to reduce the footprint from 20 for 15%. I have no problem with that. I think in our situation, in our arid country here, zero scapeing is, is something that's acceptable to me. No problem with that. Reducing the living landscape from whatever, 75 to 65%, again, no problem. I, I think Counselor Shumway made it sound like we didn't like the whole thing. I think I like most of it. The only problem I have is this, this sliding scale. That's the basic hang-up for me. And, and I, maybe we can come to some kind of solution because I see that for some places, that will overgrow the situation and will be too much. And, and so, I like the idea of maybe increasing even the flexibility that staff would have to do these things. By the way, I noticed that this staff flexibility seems to only go downward. It doesn't seem to go upward. You know, that they can go 30% less, but they can't go 30% more. That's already a, a sort of an interesting aspect to it. But so be it. I mean, we also have to look at the price of things. But it should not be misinterpreted here that some of us don't like, or at least I don't like, the ordinance. I, I like most of it. I think it's, it's very well thought out. I just think I have a democratic problem here with, you know, not treating people equally, but maybe that can be addressed through a sliding scale, a flexibility issue that can be added to it. So, thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. I know we've got some more councilors. The question I have, is there anyone in the audience that would, is here to provide public comment on this item? Okay, let's go to Counselors then. Counselor Pierce, or Vice Mayor Pierce, I keep saying that tonight.
That's fine. So, the only thing I'd like to add is related to the postponement. If we could, and if we go forward with a postponement, if we could actually push it a little bit so that Mr. Strube's group has the opportunity to, to weigh in as well, and he may already know what his answers are to some of these things, but I'd like to include that in our timing, if at all possible.
Uh huh. That's smart.
Thank you. Counselor, Counselor Schuster?
Thank you. I've watched this several times. When this came up from the planning commission, they tried to do three amendments, all failed because people basically said they like what's on there. This is a living document. Can we come back and visit it in a year? Yes, we can come back and visit this in a year. We are still in the first item, and we're over an hour into this meeting. I hope we can get two more items done tonight. Because I think this is comical. This is a good proposal, and we're going to nitpick it to death. It's been through staff, it's been through the liaison group, and all of them have said it's a good proposal, and now we're going to delay it again and try to change it again. I see one thing I could support, the, the art in lieu of.
Me, too.
And it's something that they're going to have to bring us, I don't want to say a rendering of the art or whatever. That would be the only way I'd consider it in, in anything on the planning commission. I mean, we are micromanaging this thing. We're not letting staff do it. To say we're letting staff do it would be a ridiculous thing to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Weaver?
I'm in agreement with Counselor Schuster. Thank you.
Let me make sure, is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment? Counselor Somerville?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I was just going to offer a motion to postpone until the second meeting in September, which would be September 20th, 2016. Postpone second reading until then.
Thank you. All right, speaking to the postponement?
There was no second.
I need a second first.
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion and a second by Counselor Weaver, speaking to the postponement.
Speaking to the postponement, Your Honor.
Please do.
Interested in the art aspect of the proposal.
Yeah, me, too.
I don't know if it needs that full time, but maybe that's best. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Shumway?
I'm going to vote no on the postponement, but I think it'd be an easy solution just to give direction to staff to include the, the other features, arts, et cetera, you know, that would make this more acceptable. Because I, I agree with that portion of it. I just don't agree that we need to go back and, and change all the formulas and ideas and proposals that have been brought forward. So, I'm going to vote no on the proposed, the postponement so that we can move this to third reading.
You're speaking?
No. I'm going to put it up here.
And I'll, I'll say this also, I also agree with the art option. It does make sense. I'm, I'm not willing to postpone it this time. I think we've got a good product on the floor, and I'd like to move forward with it. Any other comments on the postponement? City Clerk, could you do roll call, please?
On the postponement, yes. Hanson?
Yes.
Henry? Going to say absent. Shumway?
No.
Schuster?
No.
Somerville?
Yes.
Vitale is absent. Weaver?
Yes.
Pierce?
No.
Legas?
No.
I'm not coming up with the right number, I'm sorry.
We have seven councilors.
We only have seven people here.
We have seven councilors present.
Two, four, three.
I have four no's, three yeses, and two absent.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm like, wasn't seeing the third no.
That motion to post, that motion to postpone fails. We're back to the original ordinance on second reading. Counselor Somerville?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Unfortunately, I can't have the extra time, but I will have the amendments on third reading and request that it not be put on the consent agenda.
Thank you.
I'll do them all on third reading. Thanks.
I would agree with that.
Any other comments before we go to a vote for second reading? Counselors Pierce?
Can I just make an amendment to include the art aspect of this?
Yes, you may.
Direction to staff.
Or? Let me, yes.
I mean, because that's really all I'm.
I think it would be a good idea to make an amendment to, to direct staff to look at the alternative of the art, and that way, it's on the record and we can go forward with it. So, Counselor, or Vice Mayor Pierce?
So, if I could just make a motion to amend and add art, and arts.
In lieu.
In lieu to this document?
Second.
How's that, is that a?
Thank you. There's a motion and a second by Counselor Weaver. Discussion on the amendment. Counselor Somerville?
So, I will, I will support it, but right now, art is already an alternative on the, on the chart. What is missing is that ability to substitute landscaping. And there's also a significant public art process that all needs to be incorporated in this, so I think it needs some, some serious thought to come back and be appropriate.
Senior Planner Bloom?
Honorable Mayor and City Council, it is accurate, there is a provision for art where art can substitute some of the required units for landscaping. Counselor Somerville is correct that there is a process that's outlined in the public art plan that does set some parameters for art to be approved by a, a committee and then incorporated. With the Regal Fox Theater that was recently done, yes, we did account art as part of that project, and we did use that as alternative to some of the landscaping. Since this item is going to be moving forward tonight, I would ask Counselor Somerville to talk to me. We can look at getting some more appropriate details put into this ordinance here regarding public art. But yes, the, the art component on the table, it's shown on page 11 of this ordinance, the very last page of that attachment, it is very open. It just says landscape, lighting, sculpture, art, water feature, and/or sheltering, structure and landmark, and it says as determined by department. So, there's no numerical value, but we need to look at different ways to assign that numerical value. And probably the best way to, to do that will be to look at that public art plan and the criteria there. So, it's something that we've noted, we can pull something together as staff to have it ready for a third reading, which would be on August 6th.
Thank you. Further comments by counsel?
For September 6th. Thank you, Your Honor. You know, I, I don't like to do things on the fly, and, and I think that's what we're doing here. We should suggest this to staff to incorporate it in some fashion and not make it an amendment, but just, you know, let it, let it be a staff suggestion. Because my other suggestion, of course, is also to increase or enhance the flexibility that staff can have, you know, in, in approving these things. I think we are at whatever, 20% at this point, maybe make it 25% or something like that. I'm also kind of concerned that it only goes in one direction, but I guess that can be changed. Thank you, that's my suggestion.
Mr. Strube?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. What, what I would maybe suggest is, is that if you, if you give direction to staff, not as an amendment, give direction.
you, if you give direction to staff, not as an amendment, give direction to staff to consider what this would be when we meet this Thursday, our CDLC, that whole committee could take under advisement that request for art. We could help Mr. Bloom with some suggestions that, again, that would pull that whole group together, and then those suggestions could be brought forth after that process. You wouldn't have to have an amendment. We bring things to the table all the time in that committee that come from the public or the city or wherever, and that would be one of those things that we would be happy to put on our agenda for Thursday. And Mayor Polikas is even an honorary member of that. He could come and he could, and he could help us with that, but we would draw on that experience we have with all those people, and we could help staff. Again, this is a living document, so we could, we could help with that, that process, and that would be, that would just be another task to continue to develop this living document. Thank you. Thank you. Vice Mayor?
So, I can withdraw that amendment?
Does the second agree?
I do.
Does the second?
All right, we're back to the main motion. I think we've discussed it quite a bit. City Clerk, would you do roll call, please, on the main motion?
Yes. Hanson?
Yes.
Henry absent. Shumway?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Somerville?
No.
Vitale absent. Weaver?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Polikas?
Yes.
Six yeses, one no, two absent.
That motion carries. Item number 11, Councillor Schuster.
Thank you. We're on a heck of a pace here. Title is "A Grant Agreement Between the Wyoming Business Council and the City of Laramie for a Business Ready Communities Award for Bright AgriTech. I move to approve the grant agreement between the Wyoming Business Council and the City of Laramie for the Business Ready Communities Award for Bright AgriTech and authorize the mayor to sign."
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second by the Vice Mayor. Ms. Reese?
Honorable Mayor, Council, this is just simply a grant agreement from the Wyoming Business Council in the amount of $2,685,750. This grant enables us to move forward on this project, and at a later date you will see a loan agreement before you in the amount of $209,250. The Wyoming Business Council's policy is that applicants, or rather awardees, exhaust all grant funds before dipping into loan funds. That's why you will see two separate agreements before you. So, again, this is a grant agreement that allows us to move forward on the Bright AgriTech project, through which they will build a corporate headquarters in the Laramie Rivers Business Park and create 40 additional positions in Laramie over the next three years. Those positions will be created, not all of them, but quite a few of them, through an internship to employment pipeline through which they will start UW students out at about $14 an hour, and then ultimately fill positions in the $40 an hour range. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councillor Hanson?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm looking at the budget sheet here, I am looking at it, and there's something that's curiously empty, and that's the line "project cost."
Oh, sure.
You know, and so I was kind of in the dark whether these two possibilities, namely the loan and the grant, are anywhere close to what is required, or will there be other monies needed, or are we, it seems like we were shooting whatever in the dark barrel or something like that. Is this about correct, the figures?
The, so, the total project cost will be the entirety of the grant and the loan, combined those total, what you see here, which is the total amount, $2,895,000. That's all the money we have to work with. That's what the building will need to cost. When we developed the cost estimates for the building, we circulated those estimates to a number of local contractors to make sure that what we were putting forth to the Wyoming Business Council was as accurate as possible. So, we feel pretty comfortable with that number.
It was just that line was empty, and I thought, hmm, where are we here? You know, is it double the cost, or is it half the cost, or whatever? Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, thank you. Comments from council? Would anyone from the public wish to comment? City Clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Hanson?
Yes.
Henry absent. Shumway?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Polikas?
Yes.
Seven yeses, two absent, Your Honor.
That's, item passes. Item number 12, Councillor Schuster.
Thank you very much again. The title is "Design and Preconstruction Contract for Bright AgriTech Corporate Office and Manufacturing Facility. I move to approve the design and preconstruction contract for the construction of the Bright AgriTech corporate offices and manufacturing facility with Hazleton Wyoming Contractors in the amount not to exceed, and this will be, to be provided with a signed contract at the 8/15/2016 meeting and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign."
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councillor Weaver. Once again, Ms. Reese?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Council. I'm standing in for Sam Farstead on this item, but it is a perfect segue to the item I was here representing. That number that was to be provided tonight is $474,209. What that number provides to you is the foundational cost estimating to get to a guaranteed maximum budget cost. So, that's what is before you tonight. The way we came to this, or I went through this process, is immediately following the State Land and Investment Board decision on the Bright AgriTech grant. We issued a request for proposals, and, which resulted in 17 firms attending a mandatory preconstruction meeting to learn more about this project. Of those 17 firms, we received applications from six firms. Those included Hazleton, Sampson, Spiegelberg, Archon, FCI, and Shepherd Construction. A review committee consisting of representatives from Bright AgriTech, LCBA, and the city reviewed their written proposals and determined that the proposals were close enough in ranking that it would be a good idea to interview all applicants. So, the applicant interviews did make that spread a little different, but still during that process, Hazleton ranked in, as the top candidate, and then when totaling the written scores and the interview scores, Hazleton remained at the top, though to really make sure of this decision, the Laramie Chamber Business Alliance did call references on the top three candidates. So, those were Hazleton, Sampson, and Archon. Ultimately, Hazleton was selected to move this project forward. So, again, what you're seeing here is the foundational information that will get us to a guaranteed price. Down the road, you'll see an amendment which reflects that guaranteed maximum price.
Your Honor, could you repeat that figure one more time, the...
Yes, sir. That figure is $474,209.
Okay, thank you.
Questions? Comments? Councillor Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I probably should have said this as a comment for the last item, but I just wanna say just a couple of quick things about Bright AgriTech, having been out to their old facility, or what's maybe still their current facility, and looked around, had a little bit of a tour. It's a really interesting business. I mean, they're technologically innovative, they're working with sustainable business practices. I think they should be celebrated a little bit more, and they probably will be as they move forward, both with this project and their business in general. I mean, it's really in need. You don't remember too much from the presentation or whatever, but you probably all do. It's a great business, and I think it's great that they're gonna, they're gonna get some support from the Business Council to move forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? Anyone from the public wish to comment? City Clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Hanson?
Yes.
Henry's absent. Shumway?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
Vitale absent. Weaver?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Polikas?
Yes.
Seven yeses, zero no's, two absent.
Thank you. That motion carries. Item number 13, Councillor Hanson?
Thank you, Your Honor. This deals with an overlay project for Beach Street. I move to award the Beach Street overlay project bid to Simon Contractors of Cheyenne, Wyoming, in the amount not to exceed $413,764, with a contingency of $41,000, to approve the contract therefore and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second by Councillor Schuster. Director Smith?
Your Honor, the mayor and members of council, the Beach Street Overlay Reconstruction Project is a specific project that we budgeted in this biennium. Typically, we would do overlays as part of a, an overlay program. Beach Street has some specific distresses that cause us to basically reconstruct the street, similar to Boulder. You may recall last year that we reconstructed a segment of Boulder Street. Same distress here, so we'll essentially be reconstructing Boulder between, Beach Street between Boulder and Vista with this project. The project was bid in accordance with the city's purchasing policies. Bids for the project were opened on July 26th. We did receive two qualifying bids. Simon had a base bid of $408,409, with an ad alternate of $31,365. After deducting bid item four, we have a total of $413,764. The ad alternate is for the milling byproduct that comes from the street. We will have that delivered to our facility. We then use that as a raw material such, similar to road base, so that's why we bid that project in that manner. It's all within budget, and staff recommends that council award contract to Simon Contractors. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Councillor Hanson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just two questions. A, where do you store this stuff? And the other thing was, it addresses the question of the alleys, and of course, will that, they are not going to be hard surface, then they are sort of somewhere in between what they are now and a hard surface with this stuff being put on it. Is that what I understand?
Yeah. Your Honor, the mayor, councilmember Hanson, the raw material is stored at our facility on North Fourth Street.
Okay, thank you.
And when we use this material, for example, in alleys, it does bind together a little bit. It's a little bit different material than your standard road base, but the oil and the asphalt material will allow it to bind together a little bit, but it won't be a too hard surface like you would find with an overlay project.
That's a good idea. I really like it.
It's a wonderful product.
Thank you.
Thank you. Recycled asphalt. Councillor Schuster?
We use a tremendous amount of it out at the rifle range, and it works very good for both winter and summer travel, and especially when you get it packed down about three years, it becomes a very, very hard surface again.
Good. Any further comments by council? Anyone from the public wish to comment? City Clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Hanson?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Henry absent. Vitale absent. Somerville?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Polikas?
Yes.
Seven yeses, zero, or two absent.
That motion carries. Item number 14, Councillor Hanson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Before I introduce it, I think I understand it correctly that this came in under budget, and you're suggesting doing more to fill out the budget. Is that correct? Okay, then let me introduce it. I would like to move to award the 2016 overlay project bid to Simon Contractor in Chey, of Cheyenne, Wyoming, in the amount not to exceed $320,000, to approve the contract therefore and authorize the mayor and the city clerk to sign.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councillor Somerville. Director Smith?
Your Honor, the mayor and members of council, this is our annual overlay project where we overlay certain streets within the community that have a pavement condition index that is starting to fall. And if you recall the pavement management system discussion, when you overlay a roadway, your pavement condition index goes straight up, and you basically start that deterioration curve all over again, so that's why we do these overlay projects. The streets that were included in the base bid for the 2016 overlay project were Buford Street between 13th and 15th, and Pure Street from Wyoming to Madison. As you can see, the low bid came in at $118,571.25. Those prices are actually lower than we received last year, so that was a little bit of a surprise to us. Given the available budget, staff is requesting authorization to utilize the full budget up to $320,000. We wouldn't quite get there, but included in that funding is the remainder of the overlay budget, along with $68,000 in SBT funds. So, total available budget was $568,000. When we deduct the chip seal project of $232,090, we have a total available budget of $335,910. We request authorization to utilize up to $320,000 of that funding. One of the locations that we have identified is the intersection of 13th and Sheridan. There are some utility cuts there, and we're getting, receiving a number of complaints about that. So, we propose to overlay that intersection, along with a number of other roadways throughout the community based on the pavement condition index.
Thank you.
Your Honor, may I just clarify, because that is my question. I'm not quite clear. Are you coming back with a motion to, how to spend the rest of the money, or is that already included in here? Because there's only that one project mentioned. So, I was a little unclear what I was suggesting there.
Your Honor, the mayor, councilmember Hanson, we're requesting authorization to
Spend the whole.
Spend the money. We do have a list of roadways that we would overlay, and it's spread out throughout the community.
And will that come back to council? That's the question.
No, sir.
Okay.
Councillor Shumway?
Your Honor, there was an action by this council to increase the street maintenance by $250,000, which makes possible this action that we're talking about now. And so, I think as a council, we can say, you know, our desired purpose has been met, and I certainly am supportive of this.
Thank you. Further comments or questions by council? Would anyone from the public wish to comment?
I'll make a comment, Your Honor.
Please.
I voted against that, and I was wrong.
Better late than ever.
No, no, on the allocation.
On the budget.
All right. City Clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Hanson?
Yes.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Henry absent, Vitale absent, Schuster.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Falekus.
Yes.
Seven yeses, two absent, no zero, or no nays.
Thank you. That motion carries. I'd like to suggest we do one more item, so that we can allow Mr. Smith to go home before we take a break. So, having said that, unless there's any objections, item number 15, Counselor Shumway.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is regarding a professional services agreement, and we're going to be talking about a lot of money here, so hopefully we'll give this proper consideration. This has to do with the transmission lines that the city is doing in rehabilitation projects. I move to award the professional services agreement for the 20-inch transmission line rehabilitation project to Mechanical Systems, Inc. of Cheyenne, Wyoming, in the total amount of $5,545,155, plus a contingency of $500,000, for a total amount not to exceed $6,45,155, and to authorize the mayor and clerk to sign, and to authorize the necessary budget transfers, including $2 million from fiscal year 2018 into fiscal year 2017, to amend the budget.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second by Counselor Somerville. Director Smith.
Your Honor, the mayor and members of council, over the last couple of years, we've had a number of discussions about the 20-inch transmission line that runs from the water treatment plant into town. Approximately four years ago, we did a project called the Piggings Project that cleaned the inside of the line out. As part of that project, it exposed the coal tar liner to the fresh water, clean water. That began then to leach into the water, and it became unusable for a period of time. Our staff, led by Michael Idle, then developed a chemical cocktail, if you will, that reestablished a biofilm with, on the inside of that 20-inch transmission line that allowed us to put that pipeline back into service and make it safe for drinking. Based on all of those events, we felt it was best that we do something long-term and find a solution to the problem. And the solutions ranged from complete replacement, removing the coal tar liner, to lining it, and so on and so forth. That led us to developing a methodology of hiring a design firm and a consultant to come up with the appropriate solution. So through that, we ended up developing basically a design-build contract proposal, where we went out with a request for qualifications, asking for teams of designers and contractors to submit proposals. We didn't dictate to them what type of installation they were to do. They were free to propose, remove, and replace any form of slip lighting and so forth. We ended up with 12 proposals, and I'll tell you, some of the most difficult reading I've ever had to do, but we worked through those because they were all very technical in nature. Everyone had their own process. And we ended up, through that whole process, with two firms, Mechanical Systems Incorporated and a firm called Hebna. And coincidentally, they both proposed virtually identical solutions. I'll pass these. These are product samples, where an HDPE, or high-density polyethylene pipe, is extruded and pulled through the host pipe, and once you relieve the tension off of that, it expands back and forms to the wall of the pipe. So both firms obviously had very similar technologies, very similar approaches. Through the interview and continued evaluation process, we did come up with the recommendation of Mechanical Systems Incorporated, and that is based primarily on two factors. One, they have considerably more experience in doing this type of work. They've done a number of large projects like this. It's close to a 19-mile project.
Wow.
And their fee, their fees were very close, and MSI is an in-state contractor, so that's how they came out on top between Hebna. And I, if I could back up for just a moment, when we were issuing the request for qualifications, we established a budget for it, because in our budget, we were going to phase it over multiple years. When the proposals were settled on between MSI and Hebna, we realized that we had an opportunity here to do the project all at once, rather than phase it over three or four or five years. So that's why we're doing these gyrations with the budget, trying to accomplish this project all at once. So just briefly about the budget, there is $2.6 million in the fiscal year 17 budget. We're also moving money to the tune of $1.2 million from PRV stations. That's already in the budget as well. $100,000 from dispensing stations, using $374,000 worth of SPT water funds, and then moving forward $2 million from fiscal year 18. So we're basically moving that money forward. We're not replacing it. It's, we're just moving it forward, and the budget for this biennium remains the same. It's whole. So the total funding available is $6,274,000. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Counselor Hanson.
Thank you, Your Honor. First question, if I remember correctly, we have two transmission lines running out from the treatment plant to the city. Does this deal with both, or do we have damage only in one? I didn't, I don't remember that.
Your Honor, the mayor, Councilmember Hanson.
I have more questions.
That's very good. I should have mentioned that. There are two lines parallel. One is a 24-inch, and this 20-inch. This project deals only with the 20-inch line.
And the other line doesn't have that problem?
It doesn't have that problem at this point, right.
Okay, so I'm still shocked at the amount of money here. And what has come to my thinking is, I guess, which one is that, the smaller line or the bigger line that is in charge?
The smaller one.
The smaller one. So we still have the bigger line?
Yes.
Okay. You remember, we've had sort of future discussions to, that we eventually will have to build a new water treatment plant anyway, because the one that is there is reaching its age, and probably within the next, whatever, 20 years, we'll have to build another one. I've been suggesting always to, because of questions about where to get the water from, that the new treatment plant could be built maybe at the ranch site, you know, to get that water from there. So I'm just, at this point, ruminating the question whether spending 5.5 million on rehabilitating, or whether we should bag the money or save the money and start thinking about what we need to do about a treatment plant that needs to be done eventually anyway. I have no idea, and that's the question, of course, that I have to ask you, is whether the one larger line would be sufficient for the supply of, supplying of water to the city during the months that we use the river more exclusively than the treatment out on the other side of town. So that's a question that I have for you.
Your Honor, the mayor, Councilmember Hanson, it is our recommendation that we rehabilitate this line. The water treatment plant will remain in service for a number of years. As you said, it might be 20 or 30 years. We just completed an evaluation of the plant. We can keep that in service for an extended period of time. This, by rehabilitating this line, it allows us to maintain that capacity. We've been fairly fortunate and not needed that. For example, if we were in a drought condition or had some other form of an emergency, we would certainly need this parallel line. We've been fortunate. We haven't needed to do that when it was out of service. Another component is that we are making improvements to the water treatment plant right now. We will, after those are complete, have the ability to treat our entire water right. We don't have the ability to transmit it to town unless we pumped it, but we do have the ability to treat it, and we certainly would be nowhere near have, being able to deliver that water to town if we only had a 24-inch main. So we do need those from a capacity standpoint. So if we don't replace this 20-inch and keep it in service, then we're not utilizing our full right at the plant, and at some point, we're going to have to replace it or find some other means.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Counselor Schuster.
Paul before me.
Counselor Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. All right, so this seems like a great example of why the city needs to build up its infrastructure funds and its enterprise funds, something that we talk about from time to time up here. I think when we see dollar amounts like we see for this project, and, you know, it gives us some pause, and, you know, even causes a little bit of alarm. But I think it's a good opportunity to talk about, you know, the costs for major infrastructure projects, and these type of costs really are not that unusual for major infrastructure projects. But I think the public might want a little bit better understanding of that. I wonder if we could just touch on some of the factors that drive these costs, you know? In other words, why so much? I understand this is a unique project, but if we could maybe touch on that a little bit generally, it would be good for the discussion.
Director Smith.
Your Honor, the mayor, Councilmember Weaver, I guess I had a little bit different perspective, because we're able to renew or rejuvenate essentially 19 miles of pipeline. Some of the other proposals, we're only going to do about five or, you know, eight miles of pipeline for the same amount of money. So basically, we went from project proposals that were roughly $1 million a mile to this one that's almost a quarter of $1 million per mile. So I think it's a very cost-effective solution to the problem. And just the fact of the manner that you're working with 19 miles of pipeline is what causes the price to be higher than you would hope. Certainly one of the cheaper alternatives.
I think that's a pretty good answer for both parts of the questions. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Schuster.
Thank you. A lot of people do not realize, if we took every mile of pipe we had coming in from our one water treatment plant, plus our wells, plus everything that's in the city, we're probably up there around $350 million worth of stuff. So a $6 million project is, yes, still a huge amount to come out of our funds, but in the overall scheme, it's probably somewhere less than 5% of what we have invested already, and this investment will keep it going for a long time. My question's going to seem really strange. When we originally put this pipe in, we crossed a lot of people's property. And at that time, way, way, way back when, we offered to be their hookup to the city water supply, which a lot of people don't realize, we probably have 50, 60 hookups along Highway 230, or we offered them money. So are all these hookups still working and functioning? Are we going to have to re-tap into these systems when we put this liner in to keep those people in water, or what's going on there?
Your Honor, the mayor, Councilmember Schuster, yes, there are a number of taps on the transmission main. We don't allow those connections today, but we do honor the ones that are in existence. We will restore those taps, so that liner will go through, as you see there, and then you'll go back and open that tap up, so they'll have service restored. And I don't know the exact number of taps in the 20 versus the 24, but any of those that do exist will be restored.
Counselor Shumway.
Just a quick question. Once this rehabilitation project takes place and that liner is in place, how long is the expected life to extend these pipelines?
That's a very good question, Your Honor, the mayor, Councilmember Shumway. HDPE, probably 100 years. I'm not sure it's going to be. We're going to keep that pipeline in service long after all of us are gone.
Counselor Somerville.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And actually, I realize it's more of a comment than a question, so I'm happy to wait.
Please go.
Okay. So I just wanted to say, you know, you go to NLC, and you hear all of this information right now about water infrastructure. It's certainly very much in the national news, and no city ever wants to have water infrastructure issues of any kind, by any means. So I just want to say for the public, you know, these systems are incredibly complex. They're complex to maintain. They take a serious amount of expertise. And I think this is a really good example of the city of Laramie being active in providing safe water infrastructure for something like this, whether we're, while the price tag is enormous, the price tag, if we had a monumental failure, would be 10 times this amount. You know, you can't, what is the saying, penny wise and pound foolish, or something along those lines. So I just, I want to, you know, get that out there to the residents of Laramie, that we are, you know, going after and providing safe water infrastructure, and that we'll continue to make these investments, and want everybody to feel confident in their water supply. Thanks.
Counselor Hanson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just one more question. Has the process that they suggest been used someplace else, and has it been successful? I'm still heartburning over 5.5 million, and I'm just remembering how this whole thing came about, namely that we tried to do good things in cleaning out this darn line, and we created the problem. So I want to be sure, this is a process that has been proven, used someplace else, has worked, or are we just shooting in the dark here? Thank you.
Your Honor, the mayor, Councilmember Hanson, yes, that's, this has been used extensively. One of the reasons we selected the team led by MSI is because of their extensive experience utilizing this technology.
Thank you. I had a couple of questions. The, I know we have, I know we have reserves within these accounts, and I didn't hear everything where the money sources are coming from. Some of, some of the revenue to support this project is coming from our reserves within our enterprise fund?
Your Honor, no, no, sir. The funding is all coming from existing projects. We didn't use any reserve funding.
So it will not affect our future rate increases?
No, this is all within the adopted long-range financial plan from the budget, which is why we did it this way. And specifically, when I talk about moving that $2 million forward from fiscal year 18 to 17, we're not, we're not backfilling that $2 million with other projects.
Okay.
So that we're just moving the funding forward, but there, we're not adding $2 million in funding, and that would have caused an increase.
Thank you. Further comments by council? Anyone from the public wish to comment? City Clerk, would you please do roll call?
Shumway.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes, sorry.
Schuster.
Yes.
Henry absent, Vitale absent. Henry absent. Vitale absent. Weaver?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Flickus?
Yes.
Seven yeses, two absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. And let's take a break.
Agenda and move item 18 up to be considered before we move to 16. We have a gentleman here from, it's Leo Chapman, who's a commissioner over from Carbon County. We can move that up and hear that now so we can get him home.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion, a second. I believe this requires a two-thirds vote. City attorney?
To move an agenda, no, just a majority.
Thank you. Discussion on the item? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We're going to go directly to item number 18. Counselor Somerville?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move that we approve resolution number 2016-60 to Wyoming Legislature's interim joint revenue committee advocating for the support of the preservation of the excise tax on electricity produced by wind at its current level and opposing any increase in such excise tax in order to encourage wind development and to realize the resulting future direct and indirect revenues to the state of Wyoming, Wyoming counties, and Wyoming municipalities from wind development and ancillary wind development businesses, thereby providing long-term and sustainable benefits to the local communities and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Thank you.
Second. It was a second by Counselor Hanson. Assistant city manager, Mr. Derrigan.
Honorable mayor and counsel, the resolution before you is essentially a policy decision of this body. I won't, from that standpoint, I won't give you a lot of direction as to what to do, but I'll be glad to answer questions as to my thoughts along the way. I believe the potential that this resolution brings to you would be to leave the wind tax at its current level, which will encourage development. While we don't necessarily receive any revenue directly from the wind tax that's split by the state and the counties, we do reap benefits of sales tax that's generated from projects such as this. I've noted that it kind of fits in with your economic development goal because the additional revenue that we may see from sales tax revenues for these projects would give us some additional money to do development. The main project that's probably in question right now, which is why Rollins and Carbon County are kind of leading this charge, is the Power Company of Wyoming's project south of Rollins, which is about 1,000 wind turbines. So part of the uncertainty that they're facing, in the way I understand this, is that not knowing what that wind tax will be makes it very hard to determine your business model and where you need to go in your pricing and things like that. This does potentially, in the long term, affect Albany County with intermountain wind. LLC is looking to do about 170 turbines on a farm just in northern Albany County. So from that perspective, we could see the same issue. We could see the same detriment to the potential tax base increase once that project is permitted. And it's not been to the industrial siting division yet, but it's in the process and will be there soon. At this time, I think it may be best if Counselor Somerville maybe addresses municipalities and the resolution that was adopted in June about this as well. And I think I've passed that out to you. Carbon County Commission has adopted a resolution. The city of Rollins has adopted a resolution, as well as some of the other incorporated municipalities in Carbon County. The Albany County Commission adopted a resolution last week that they have forwarded to the revenue committee as well. So I'll just step back and let Counselor Somerville walk you through the decision that was made by WAM. And then Mr. Chapman from the Carbon County Commission would probably like to say a few words also.
Counselor Somerville?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll keep this pretty short, but the WAM resolution that assistant manager passed out, this is one of the resolutions that I briefed you guys on from the annual WAM meeting in June. This resolution came before the full body and was approved unanimously. There was no dissent to this. This has been a legislative priority for WAM, noting that there are numerous counties right now that receive tax revenue and other monies from wind development. And Wyoming being, I believe, the only state that imposes an excise tax on wind, there is concern about the economic ramifications for increasing that tax as there are other places where people can go to develop wind energy here. So I know it is WAM's intention, they will have representation at the interim joint revenue committee to continue to forward this idea and ask the committee not to recommend an increase on wind energy for the excise tax. But again, I mean, overall, this is a priority for WAM. They have the resolutions that are going to continue to support it.
Thank you. Counselor Shumway?
Well, I have a question. That is, my understanding that wind and solar energy has been subsidized in order for it to be competitive with the fossil fuels. Now, if it is, that's what we're doing, is we are subsidizing with the monies that come from taxation. And then what we're doing is returning around and taxing it again. And I don't know if that's accurate, if that's inaccurate, but it seems to me that if we're going to give them an opportunity to compete and survive, certainly don't want to increase the tax. But we want to make it to where, you know, the initial investment they have for wind turbines and things is enormous. And I don't know how long it takes to recover that investment. But, you know, when we did a tour of the Gillette generating plant for power, they indicated that they produce more power in that Gillette plant with either coal or gas, which is, they can use either one. They produce more power than all of the wind and solar power in the United States in just that one facility. So I'm sure it's very difficult for them to compete on a level in which they can, you know, head-to-head and dollar-for-dollar with wind and solar. So what I'm, the question I'm asking is, are we going to continue to subsidize? Or is it being subsidized in order for them to survive?
Honorable mayor and Counselor Shumway, from a subsidy standpoint in Wyoming, there are none. The sales tax exemption was removed, I believe, in 2012. And so we're reaping the benefits of that sales tax. The wind generation tax is a dollar a megawatt hour. We're the only state in the nation with any tax on wind generation. The federal subsidies, I can't speak to, and I know they exist. But from a state perspective, there's no subsidy.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite Commissioner, is it Commissioner Chapman?
Yep.
From Carbon County. And I'm sure he has some comments he'd like to share with us.
Honorable mayor and members of the council, I sure appreciate the opportunity. And I also appreciate the courtesy of letting me move forward in this conversation from your regular schedule. So that is greatly appreciated. Speaking to the subsidy of the tax credit nationally, and I can't do a better job than Mr. Derrigan, who I have a great deal of admiration for. There is a subsidy still in effect for federal, and I'm not sure I know everything about it, but I believe it sunsets in the next few years. And so in our case, Power Company of Wyoming may not be off the ground and in production by the time that tax credit expires. So in that event, they're prepared not to be able to take advantage of it. However, they still want to go ahead and have put $110 million in that effect in the last 10 years, trying to get all the permitting done. And trying to get something through BLM and Fish and Wildlife Service is like pouring frozen honey out of a jar. It's just not moving very fast. Having said that, Power Company of Wyoming will be paying some ISC taxes or impact funds if they get going, to the tune of, I'm not sure the whole amount, but Carbon County was able to get 3% to the county of Albany and to be shared between Albany, the city of Laramie, and the town of Rock River. Those dollars, estimated now, of course, we don't know what they'll actually end up being because it's a bit of a convoluted tax formula based on what your tax collections are at the time, the year before, that you started receiving it. But in any event, Laramie should get around $726,530. Rock River should get $72,653. And of course, these are estimates to the penny. And then county of Albany would get $653,878. Well, that's not a great deal of money, from what I'm hearing, kicked around in this meeting today to build a pipeline. But it sure helps. And in Carbon County, that seems like a lot of money to us. We're struggling. Power Company of Wyoming has actually told us that they're not trying to compete with coal. They're trying to compete with states like New Mexico that don't have a tax. They want to sell clean power, renewable power. Coal is not going to be purchased by California and Arizona in those areas that are looking for the clean power to satisfy their needs from their state regulations. I think California is going to go to 55% soon in clean regulation, or I should say, clean power. Coal is not going to achieve that. And no one's trying to say that this is indirect competition with coal. It's a product that they're trying to sell. If they don't have a product to sell at a competitive price, obviously, if I was California and I'm looking for clean power and I got a person that wants to give it to me, and it's in New Mexico, cheaper than in Wyoming, I'll take New Mexico. And it's just a simple economics issue. So they're real concerned at this point in time whether they're even going to complete this at all. If it goes to $3, they're pretty sure they won't. Presently, at the $1 per megawatt, or megawatt, yes, I'm sorry. It's a fair tax. And we're all receiving our portions of it as it's handed down through the state. So with that, I couldn't do a better job explaining it than Mr. Derrigan did. So if you have any questions on me, I'd be glad to try and answer them. Otherwise, I appreciate your time and appreciate the ability to speak in front of you.
Any questions for Commissioner Chapman? Yes, Vice Mayor?
I'm not sure if you can answer this question, but some time ago, I did a fair amount of research on this. And last I recall, we are lacking the transmission lines to get the power out of here. So it doesn't really matter how much we build. We don't have the lines to move it to California. Are we still in that situation?
No. Power Company of Wyoming, in conjunction with their 1,000 tower project, is also building transwest transmission line, which will leave basically Sinclair area and go down to about Bags, if you will, and then on into Utah and down to the Arizona line, Nevada line.
Okay.
That'll be a huge tower. There's also another transmission line that's being proposed and just about through its permitting process that the Rocky Mountain Power is building. And then there's a third one that's in the process or the discussion, I think, to be done by Duke Energy, but that's down the road. None of those have been permitted.
Okay. Okay, so if the transmission lines will be there, our market basically is California. Is that right?
Correct.
And so...
Well, Arizona, Phoenix, that area, the population.
And a lot of those areas, they are doing a lot with solar energy. And the state of California has huge initiatives going on to have a real high percentage of the power usage with solar. Do you know, will that possibly compete with our wind?
I'm sure it will. I don't know to what degree. And I have been to a few of the wind infrastructure meetings, and they tell me that the demand is there to receive everything the Power Company of Wyoming wants to put down there, as well as the project that is being discussed in Oswald. So I think we'll see more power going that way. I think, well, you know, with the Clean Air Act, it's all heading that way. I mean, we're going to see that populated area wanting our clean power more so than ever. And California's wind is different than Wyoming's wind. It stops at about the time Wyoming starts. And of course, the solar doesn't work too good at night, so.
Right, but you can store it. And I'm wondering about, is California still experiencing brownouts? Or have they fixed that?
I don't know the answer to that, but I kind of suspect they'll probably be getting them again. I think we're all going to see some brownouts pretty soon.
Okay.
When they run out of mine to coal. I have a concern that we'll see problems that way.
Okay.
Counselor Schuster?
What you're saying is exactly true. One of the things when I was deciding what to be when I grew up, I took a lot of electrical class at the University of Wyoming. One of our biggest problems is transmitting it. We have a grid, and I'm just going to call it a grid, and everybody feeds into it, and then you also have everybody that receives it. And we have never built the perfect chunk of wire, meaning a semiconductor. University of Wyoming's working on it. Came very close, but the temperature required to do this semiconductor is something like 268 degrees below zero. And so trying to keep a wire that cold, this does not work. So everything has resistance. Whether you call it your wind generation turbines turn on resistance of winds by the pitch of the prop. We can only send electricity down a wire so far. So that's why I said it is called a grid. And everybody places into the grid, and then people take out of the grid. So it's good that we're doing what we're doing and better transmission lines and less resistance, because that's the whole thing is, is you work with electricity, you check for resistance in your line. So it's... I agree with you that a lot of people are going to have some brownouts. Coal is still in like the 68%, I should say, coal and oil are still about the 68% producing.
Gas.
Then you have nuclear, and you have natural gas, and you have wind turbines, and you have solar. And even though California's got this initiative, and they're up to about 55%, they've still got 45% cover.
That's correct.
And it's going to be very challenging for the United States in the next five years on whether you're going to have electricity at your house or not. So it's good to be clean energy, but I think we're going at it a little too fast. And we may pay the consequences for it, too.
I agree, Mr. Mayor and Councilman Schuster. One of the things they're doing with this transmission line is it'll be a DC line, and it helps transfer that electrical energy a lot easier than an AC line.
AC line, correct.
But the other one, Rocky Mountain Power, will be AC.
It's kind of funny, we talk about it. Your amount of voltage is the pressure going down the line. So you always hear about a 10,000-volt line that has a lot of pressure. And then amps are how much actually flows. So it's a little complicated for some people, but...
Beyond me. I was a banker. I wouldn't have a clue what you're talking about.
Other questions or comments?
Thank you very much for your time.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Chapman, for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Anyone from the public wish to comment on this? Only Mr. Chapman here. City clerk, could you do real call?
Somerville?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Henry absent. Vitale absent. Pierce?
Yes.
Flickus?
Yes.
Seven yeses, two absent, Your Honor.
That motion carries. Back to item number 16. Counselor Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 16. I move to approve original ordinance number 1953 to amend Sections 9.12.010 and 9.12.020 and 9.12.030 and 9.16.070 of the Laramie municipal code.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion, a second by Counselor Somerville.
Did you want the last line in there?
And set.
And set for second reading on September 6, 2016?
You know what? I don't have that, but I do want that in there.
Okay. It's online. We're both online. Okay. It's online. We're both online. Okay.
So yes, please.
Second concurs.
Is it on yours?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, City Attorney?
Uh, Mayor, Counsel, this, uh, is one of the items that is just cleanup. Um, if you look at the original ordinance called Disorderly House, talks about, um, I'm not sure what exactly talks about, but, uh, I don't know what it... Basically, I'm thinking like a eighteen ninety saloon, something like that, maybe a, probably a house of prostitution, something like that. Um, so the police department for many years has been using this kind of as their loud party ordinance. Which it kind of fits, I guess. So, um, what I did is I deleted the reference to the old timey stuff and just made it, uh, more modern. So if you look at nine twelve oh one oh, um, it calls it a disorderly party or gathering rather than disorderly house. And it just goes through the three different things that can, um, equal a disorderly house, I guess, or a disorderly party. The first one's the noise. The second one is fighting or disorderly conduct. Third one, when there's minors, um, consuming alcohol on the premises. Um, I borrowed heavily from a few college towns in, in coming up with this. Um, Bozeman, Missoula, and Fargo all have similar ordinances in place that the police department is used for. Fighting college parties is, you know, ninety percent of probably what this is used for. Not to say I'm targeting the college population, but that typically they're the ones that have the, the loud parties. Nine twelve oh twenty was, uh, was actually the house of prostitution, I guess. I'm not sure how, how, how a house of ill fame was different than a disorderly house, but they... Outside the prostitution, they seem to be pretty similar, so.
Favorite part.
Come on, Dave. I know you want to say something.
I replaced that with an order to disperse, um, section code, which just says that, uh, when a police officer determines that there is, um, a disorderly party, they tell everyone to leave except for the people that actually live there. If they don't leave, you can get arrested for not dispersing. And then the third one, um, was I just added, um... No, that it, tenant or owner cooperate. Yeah. So that's, that's the, uh, the only changes I made was to, uh, take out, like I said, the kind of old time language and make it so that, uh, it would actually be a college party, I guess, would, would be kind of the target, or any party, frankly, I guess. I'd seen them in other cities, I guess, where there's people in their seventies that would get cited under this ordinance if...
Church party.
Yeah.
Weaver and then Hanson.
Counsel Lou Weaver?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, yeah, I always, uh, enjoy when we change the anachronistic and archaic language and update it. But I do have one question about dispersing parties. There's nothing in this ordinance that would remove discretion from our police officers if there's the situation. And I don't know if you, if you ever went to college parties, but, um, people may be intoxicated to the point where they're really not going anywhere. Um, and it may be best that they just stay where they're at and be quiet and go to sleep. And that's still going to be, uh, uh, something that our officers have the discretion to be able to make that call and say, "Yeah, that's fine, but just shut up and be quiet. The neighbors are upset."
Yeah, Mayor and Counsel Weaver, I mean, the police department always has discretion.
Right.
And I would hope they would use their best judgment as, as well. And, um, the point of this ordinance, or this section of code is more to, um, prevent the party from starting back up again, I guess. Like, you know, this kind of puts the water on the fire and gets rid of everyone. But yeah, if there's someone that's, needs, uh, you know, isn't able to care for themselves, but there's some sober person there, I would imagine the police would use it to discretion and let them stay.
Great.
Counsel Hanson?
Thank you, Honor. Uh, now I think everybody knows my set of morals have been ill-developed anyway. But, uh, you struck nine twelve twenty in its entirety, the way I read this here, which of course includes the houses of prostitution, assignation, et cetera, et cetera. I know the terms are kind of old-fashioned, uh, but if this is not addressed anywhere else, it, to my mind, would then allow houses of prostitution in town. Is that the intent?
Um, Mayor, Counselor Hanson, um, no, the, the state and some of the federal government, um, regulate prostitution and criminalize prostitution, so it would be a state crime. And the lieutenants here, I guess you can maybe chime in, but I'm kind of doubting you've ever had a house of prostitution that you've cited under municipal code. So, I mean, it, it would be under state, state law if they were going to...
It's under state law?
Right.
Okay. Because I, I've been to New Orleans, you know. It seems to be different there, even, I guess it's under state law, not under federal law.
Perhaps it wasn't in the eighteen nineties.
Right. Um, Mayor, Counselor Hanson, the federal law would be for trafficking, things like that, human trafficking. But yeah, for the most part, states are the ones that, that, uh, address prostitution. Some major cities do. I, I don't think it's a problem to the point where the city would need to or want to address it in, in Laramie.
My fears are elated.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
Not any that I should make.
Way to go out on a high note, basically.
I'm still going.
Thank you so much.
I, I put these all in one ordinance just for ease of time, I guess, more than anything. Um, so that, that was the, uh, kind of the house parties. There's also disorderly conduct generally, um, nine twelve one thirty. All I did there, I left that one alone, except for I added a subsection G that just says it doesn't apply to const- constitutionally protected activity. Um, and it requires more or less the, the judge to find if that language is constitutionally protected.
Oh, so.
To address every situation, I mean, it would, it would take a treatise just to try and figure out what's protected speech, what's not protected speech. I can give you some examples of why I added this. Um, there's a Supreme Court case that says that police officers are to be held to a higher standard than kind of a reasonable person. So if someone starts swearing at the police officer, right or wrong, um, the police officer more or less has to put up with it. Um, as far as they can, you know, they can't criminally charge them for, for that swearing. Criminally charging anyone just for, for saying something is, can be a tricky, tricky situation. So that's, I just added kind of this catch-all in there that would kind of leave it up to the judge to determine if any of the language is constitutionally protected, and if so, it'd be like an affirmative defense.
Any other, any questions on that?
So, just a question. So this, this whole section, one thirty, probably would then be something that the courts will have to decide on the individual items. Is that what you're saying?
Uh, Mayor, Counselor Hanson, yes. It's very, very case-specific. So, um, my, my concern was is that, you know, if, if a judge were to invalidate, um, the ordinance, I mean, it would invalidate the whole ordinance. This would allow them to just look at the actual specific...
Takeout.
Speech. Yeah, right, instead of looking at the ordinance and...
Good.
And it, it just is a catch-all.
Don't we usually have a statement like that, that if part of an ordinance is found to be illegal, it does not invalidate the rest of the ordinance? Don't we usually do something like that?
Mayor, Counselor Hanson, um, I've seen that in a lot of the older ordinances.
Yeah.
And that's, uh, it's actually not, it's in the, uh, in either the preamble or the, or, or after the fact. So it doesn't, it's not in the actual ordinance itself. So in other words, it doesn't mean anything. It's just restating what the law is, but yeah, that is, that, that, that is what the law is, so.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I've got one other one that I was cleaning up in here. As you can see, nine sixteen oh seven zero, damaging property. The language they had in there, uh, my concern was there was no culpability standard. So, um, I actually came up with this one when I, I covered court a couple of weeks ago, and then an individual in there was, um, making a pretty good argument. I thought that, uh, so if, you know, you were to trip and fall in Walmart and accidentally broke like a display case or something, you could be criminally charged. And I think he was right. Under this ordinance, you could. I mean, in his particular case, his blood alcohol was a point six, so I would argue he was probably careless, reckless, or, you know, careless or reckless anyway, so. So I, all I did was added the culpability standards, careless, reckless, or intentional. So, um, to be criminally charged for damaging the property of another, that's the other thing, I shortened it up to say tangible property of another rather than talk about flower pots and things like that. Just any property, if you are careless, reckless, or intentional in your destruction of the property. So if it's an accident, if you're just merely negligent, um, you wouldn't be criminally charged. Or if someone pushed you, or, you know, something like that that was outside of your control, you couldn't be criminally charged. So I just added these culpability standards and cleaned up, got rid of all this other language.
I don't see any questions on it. So that would be it. Uh, any questions or comments from counsel on the changes? City Clerk, would you do a roll call, please?
Weaver?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
Vitale, absent. Schuster?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Henry, absent. Hanson?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Plakis?
Yes.
Seven yeses, zero nos, two absent.
Thank you. That motion carries, and it moves on to second reading. Item number seventeen, Counsel Somerville.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this is the second reading of Original Ordinance nineteen fifty-two. I'd like to, I move to approve Original Ordinance nineteen fifty-two to add, amend, and delete various sections within chapter ten point three six, uh, as enumerated in the title of the Laramie Municipal Code and set it for third reading on September sixth, two thousand and sixteen.
Second.
Thank you. This is a motion to second by Counsel Schuster. Uh, City Attorney?
Uh, Mayor and Counsel, um, first of all, I'd like to apologize. The, the one that comes up through the agenda online, um, I'd kind of forgotten that when you click on, click on it, uh, automatically turns it into Adobe, and it gets rid of all the track changes. So I gave you each a paper copy as well as emailed you a copy of the Word version, so you can see what changes were made between first and second reading. And I'll go through them one by one. Um, the first one is on page two in the definition section. Uh, I realized after the fact that recreational vehicle wasn't, not defined. So I just added definition for recreational vehicle. And then, starting on page three and, and various places through here, I realized, I guess I should have spoken to the city manager before just deleting all references to the city manager. We talked about it, and, and I guess the, the issue came up where, when you don't have statutorily created positions in here, like the Public Works Director, you know, if someday you changed his title or... Yeah, you'd have to go back and change things, which we're actually going to have to do unfortunately with, uh, um, with the Planning Department at some point. So, um, Community Development Director is referenced in, in, in the UDC a few, few places, so. So that makes sense. Um, so, and, you know, the city manager or designee. So, um, I would imagine that designee, for the most part, is going to be the Public Works Director or even someone like the street supervisor, something like that.
Are you moving to another page? Because I have a question.
Sure.
Uh, on page three, in your hard copy, uh, under, what is it? It is unlawful that starts that on top there. Uh, so Section zero one zero, then under G, you know, this deals with parking upon the sidewalk or upon public property between the curb line and the property line. I give you a very specific example. I helped take, taking care of an old elderly lady. And when we legally park at the side of the street, you remember how streets have been overlaid several times? The car kind of stands like that. And this person can simply not get out of the car, because I drive her, because we cannot use that fluctuating curb there on the side to wreck, to set the car straight so this person can get out of the car. So under this, of course, you know, I will probably have to drive up onto the curb to let her get out of the car and then re-park the car in order not to be there. I think it's just, you know, we have a lot of elderly people, and we have a lot of overlaid streets that have that big crown on them, and that presents a problem getting out of the car. If it's a one-way street and the driver is on the other side, the same problem, you know. The car is down that far, and it's a real problem. So I don't know whether you want to say by special permit or whatever. Uh, it is a problem that I face twice a week when I take this lady shopping, uh, and it's a real problem.
Uh, Mayor, Counselor Hanson, um, there have been, during the work session, there was discussions about parking on the curb, and I thought counsel was pretty mixed on that. So I, I chose to keep it a violation, but...
Yeah.
Certainly I'm open to, or it's, it's your decision, so.
Now, I know it's an individualized issue here, but, uh, I think it, it's not an issue that's just my issue. I think it's a, it's an issue for people not being, sometimes you can't even get the car door open because it scrapes on the bottom, uh, when you park in the, in the curb.
It's not trivial. I just don't know how we...
Yeah. Thank you. Counsel Schuster?
I, I don't know what to say on it because we have ticketed people in town on this one.
Yeah, I know.
And, uh, I've heard everything from, um, "If I park up there when it rains..." I live on Downey Street between Ninth and Fifteenth, and we have zero drains until we get to Ninth. So every drop of water that lands on W Hill has to come down that street. And he says if he parks like normal, he's now created a small dam for debris. And during a good rainstorm, he says he ends up with water clear past his sidewalk going towards his house. So I mean, it's, it's, it's one of those things, what do, what do we do? We've caused it in some areas with overlays, with our drainage issues, and I have no idea what we should be doing about it.
All right. Uh, City Attorney?
Uh, Mayor and Counsel, I'd, uh, when we get done here, I guess I'd entertain if, if someone wanted to make a, a motion to amend and take that, uh, you could just take G out altogether, I guess. Would be the simplest way to do it. And re, and re-letter, I guess. Or not. It's up to you.
Sometimes, some things, they may best unsaid or something like that.
Hanson?
Thank you.
Uh, if we go on to page four, um, again, the only changes are putting city manager back in there. Page five, um, is one of the few changes I made other than the city manager. Under ten point three six point one five zero, I did add that it shall not apply when I seventy is closed.
Eighty.
Eighty.
Or I eighty is closed. Yes.
Maybe the seven's crossed out.
Yeah, I don't know why that was on there, so. Uh, that wouldn't make a whole lot of sense, I guess, but... Uh, yeah, so when I eighty is closed.
Right.
Um, just based on our discussions last week, that so the semis can, can park along... Just based on our discussions last week, that, so the semis can, can park along residential areas when the interstate is closed.
Councilor Hanson?
Thank you, Your Honor. A question in my neighborhood, Ridley's, the supermarket, they have, and I observe this pretty well weekly, they have their delivery trucks coming. As a matter of fact, it's a two, whatever, two-unit tandem truck that comes in there. And you have a statement that you cannot park an unconnected vehicle on the side. Now, in order to unload this thing, they disconnect the second trailer, take the first one in and unload it, leave the other one without a driving machine sitting on the side of the sidewalk, I mean, on the, on the, at the curb, and then they reverse it and do the other thing. You have something in here about unloading, you know, that unloading is permissible, but do they simply have to get a, it says on here, written permission is given by the manager or designee, and so on, they, they would just simply come in and get a permission to do this in order to process that? They have really no other way to unload their wares into the, into the place, and I've, I observe that pretty well weekly, the way they do that.
Wait till the new parking ordinance on that street kicks in.
Yeah, they'll be really upper-creek, yeah. But I just have a question how to do that.
Sure, we're, we're kind of talking without being recognized by the chair, and we need to get back to a solid structure.
Your Honor, I think you had recognized me. Yeah, thank you. That, that is my question. Do they do that by permit then?
Mayor and Councilor Hanson, yes, they, they would do it by permission from the city manager. It does provide that they can unload and load their cargo.
Correct.
But yes, it doesn't allow them to just go and park, and I've seen that as well. And actually, that's one of the, one of the things I was hoping to address in here because that is quite dangerous, actually, to have large semi-trailers parked on close intersections around the street. Someone comes running around there, a kid comes running through there or something, it's, it can be very dangerous.
Thank you.
The very top of page six, I made a very small change. Marion actually caught that one. That was my intent to be one ton or less, not less than one ton, so. One-ton trucks, which would be like a F-350 or a thirty-five-hundred GMC or Chevy, or I don't know what Dodge's is, but you can park those, so. A lot of people obviously have trucks that have, that are designated as, as one ton, which are not that big. I mean, they're big, but they're, they're more, you know, driving, they're trucks that people drive every day. My neighbor's got one, I know, so it's, the intention was more for commercial vehicles, not for regular trucks.
Councilor Shuster?
I know many people that have one step up from that, a four-fifty, which is a ton and a half. The ones that they use in your husband's business would then no longer be able to park in a residential because they're Kodiaks and they're above a three-fifty.
But they're actually all commercial vehicles anyways, so they.
Councilor Somerville?
I'm sorry, I asked her a question, though. I'm involving with her because I, I, I think that should move to commercial vehicles instead of personal, because I know a lot of personal people that have four-fifties for motor, uh, towing trailers, and I don't know how you can enforce that one. That one would go to the courts.
Mayor, Councilor Shuster, I guess at some point you gotta pick a number, and one ton seemed to be the norm. Certainly could go higher than that. I would also note that it's commercial vehicles, too, that are, so, I mean, if it's less than a ton, it's per se not a commercial vehicle. If it's over a ton, it could still be a personal vehicle, if that makes sense, but, so, I mean, even if, even if you have a commercial vehicle and it's a, you know, a Ford F-250, it's still not a commercial vehicle under this code because it's, it's less than one ton, so it's per se not a commercial vehicle as, in this one instance, anyway, so. And I believe outside of the other city manager designees, that was the last, oh, no, there was one other change. We talked about it on page eight, that one. I just added a sentence in there about other technology for reading license plates, brought up that some cities are using robots, I think. I did look it up, and Jackson actually has someone in their little car that goes around, but there are other cities, actually, that use cameras that they mount on light posts and things like that.
Councilor Hanson?
Thank you, Your Honor. One small suggestion of a change of a grammatical type at page eight, under C, in the last line, it says, "In the below chart, the word below is either an adverb or a preposition cannot be used as an adjective." So, I suggest you turn that around, the chart below. It's a very simple one. But I used to teach grammar and even English grammar, and it's not possible that way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chart below.
Excellent. Mayor, Councilor Hanson, in fairness to me, that was how it was before, so, although I wouldn't have counted.
That's the way it was. Thank you.
Are there any other comments from council? Councilor Somerville?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Quick question. The parking fees, are those related somehow to state statute parking fees, or am I remembering that wrong?
Mayor, Councilor Somerville, no. I looked and the state doesn't regulate parking, parking fees at all, so it, no, just speeding tickets and.
So, if we wanted to change them, we would have to change them in this ordinance currently, right?
Mayor, Councilor, yes, that would be, that would be correct, and at some point, I think the city should adopt a master fee schedule in which this would be included.
Put those on it. Agreed. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's no such thing as, as perfect laws or city ordinances, but I think this is a good work product that addresses some citizen concerns that have come up over the years, and it's good to see it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from council?
Just thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Just thank you. Thank you to Jason for looking at us.
All right. City Clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Somerville.
Yes.
Shuster.
Yes.
Vitale absent. Weaver.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Henry absent. Pierce.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
Seven yeses, two absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. That item passes. We're on to item number nineteen, consideration of future council work sessions. Are there any? Councilor Somerville?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am wondering if I can get some support. I've had some conversations with some of you who's been in the works for some, quite some time, but I was gonna bring it just as legislation, but I think a work session would be probably a better way to start out, doing a work session on some rental housing standards.
I'm supportive of that.
Thank you, Councilor Weaver.
And so, I assume you'd like to direct staff to do some research on other communities?
We, we actually have, I've done a lot of research already and worked with Jason a little bit, and I.
Okay, and work with staff to.
Yeah, absolutely. Bring it all together.
To create a work session? That'd be great.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other future council work sessions? City Manager, I know a while back you talked to me about our work session schedule. Maybe now would be an opportunity to say something.
Sure. Council, you have on your list of upcoming topics, a few lingering items. Let me pull that list up. A couple of which, based on some conversation that I had recently with a few individual council members, based on those conversations, I think we can probably dispense of some of these items quickly and maybe even without a work session, once I got a more full understanding of what the concerns were. So, if you look to the second item on the future city council work session list, review of general processes of boards and commission program, in discussion with Councilor Weaver, who was one of the requesters, my understanding is the issue was simply whether the city could keep on file for twelve months, applications for board and commission positions, and of course we can, and in fact, we already are. So, if there are any other issues, you know, we could certainly address those, but if that was sort of the overriding push was to keep those applications on file so as not to have to re-interview applicants that are in the queue, so to speak, I think we've already dealt with that at a staff administrative level.
Councilor Weaver?
I agree with that completely, and I would also add that I think some of the other issues that were driving the desire to have a work session on that have, have been resolved largely, so I'm, I'm happy to have that removed. Of course, Councilor Vitale isn't here, but I'm, my concerns have been addressed.
Okay. Okay, well, then I will make an effort, if it's okay with the council, to try to speak with Councilor Vitale, see if she had any other concerns, and if not, then if you're okay, we can take the liberty of scratching this off the list. We also have, I'm skipping down to number four, you'll see that there's an asterisk next to the UDC-WAM member poll results. We will incorporate that data that's been previously provided to you into the work session, I think, next week on development review processes here at the city. And that will take that item off the list as well as a staff requested work session. On the inter, the third item on the list, the city-county agreements, really, this is just a matter of us all finding the time to create a database. I have told you before, I have that partially completed. It just keeps falling down the priority list. If there is something else that you were looking for in that work session, other than just a catalog of those agreements, please let me know, but my understanding is that's really what you're after, is similar to what we did with the University of Wyoming, just cataloging our agreements with them, literally in like an Excel database.
Your Honor, at, at that point, there may be discussion of some items because, for example, the hospital agreement or the ambulance agreement comes up fairly frequently and, and the rates change, et cetera. I think it would be good to have something like that, and then we probably could pick out one or two where we say we need to discuss these in detail because some of it is outdated or something of that nature might occur. But such a list would be very handy, and then we could, as a result of that, probably have a work session on items that might be concerning us. Thank you very much.
Moving down that list, the funding allocation review for childcare providers, this was requested by Mayor Polikas. Again, not a timely issue so much. We don't have any additional funding right now that we intend to put out grant requests for. Dave, I don't know when we would do that. I'm thinking a year out at least. Yeah, so the question is, how timely is this issue?
I don't believe it's timely, but I do believe that to prevent what happened last time, we should have some sort of a priority as to how that funding is allocated, but it certainly isn't something that needs to be done in the next couple of months.
Okay. And then, Councilor Somerville, you have two or three in a row here. Basically, I just need to know if these are still current or not, and I understand from our conversation that maybe one of these issues is no longer having a push in the community. Is that the homeless veterans?
That's correct. That group has dissolved.
Okay. And Councilor Shumway requested this as well. So, were we responding then to that community group that no longer exists?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we can take that off.
Are you talking about the one that was led by Interfaith and that group?
No.
Because that's still active.
Yeah, no, that one's still active. This one was the one that had come to town briefly, and I can't think of their acronym.
I know.
Yep, and they're gone, so I'm okay taking that off.
Okay, so we can remove that. What about, we'll start at open three-one-one and just go down from there.
So, that one, I mean, that, that really is a city app development project, not time-sensitive. I'm just not sure when that's going to be timely for a conversation. You know, the last time we had talked, the city was doing a lot of software updating and exploring the platform options that we have currently on our Civic Plus, and so I'm happy that that one can just kind of sit in the background.
That's, that's all that is. The Turner Track plan update, I know I had requested because what's developed, developed up on the Turner Track is not what's in the plan, but I don't know what planning, or what's time is going to look like, so I certainly, whatever we need to do with that. I think it's important, but we have three planning staff now, so.
Right. And your Turner Track plan is, I think, not quite even two years old. You're correct. It is a plan, and there has been some deviation from the vision there, at least on specific lots, you know? Does that mean we update the plan, or does that mean we just deviate it? I don't know.
I don't know. Good question.
Let me, let me talk to planning staff, but you're correct, Councilor Somerville, the time available for planning staff, and this is, this is one item here, but I don't think it's on your goal list, so keep in mind, you have a lot of goals on your goal list this year that also involve planning and development, studies, assessments, et cetera. So, let me talk with Dave and the planners about their time availability, and we're working right now on a report on progress on goals. We can prioritize all of that in there, in, in a list of, here's all the things on their plate, here's the priority for them, or the staff's availability to get to them, I guess I should say.
That's fair enough. The ACTA one can go. That's an ongoing discussion that ACTA is taking the lead on with, why not?
Okay.
So, that one doesn't need to come back to council right now.
Okay. Okay, then that deals with those. We'll have the update on taxi laws, I think, next week. Urban renewal is in September. Candidly, they're requested by staff. We've had two work sessions thus far on annexation and extraterritorial city services. The next work session in that series, I think, would be actually moving toward an action plan. I am leaving this until I receive direction from the council to pick this back up, and in part because I think it ties to some discussions that you're having with the county, and it's a little unclear to me, the timing of bringing this forward and if the county should be involved and at what level. So, this, I think, is something that staff certainly recommend that you address, but a little unclear on the best way to get there. Downtown design guidelines, this is something I'm visiting with the community development folks planning and building about, and I think this may be able to be removed unless the council sees it as priority, but from a staff standpoint, I don't think the timeliness is there for this. And pool inspection program, we're gonna talk about that in September, maybe early October. We're getting some data right now from the Department of Ag. Floridation is on your schedule now for September, and the stormwater program and funding will come to you in September or October. We're just finalizing the stormwater capital program. So, we're making good progress. I'll edit this list, and then you can add more to it, because it'll be shorter. It'll look like we have time.
Councilor Hanson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just one question about restaurant, not pool, but restaurant inspections. I remember I, I accompanied the health inspector on those. Is there any change? Because I think we've done that always, and we do have a health inspector again, don't we?
We do, Council. You recall, in the budget, the budget, as you've adopted it.
Yeah.
Allows for the restaurant and pool inspection program to revert back to the Department of Ag at the State of Wyoming next June. But we also discussed during the budget work sessions that we would get some more data, and we would come back for another round of conversations about this with a little bit more data. And after we give you that data, I think that the tourism board is waiting for some input from the council as to whether you want to allow that function to revert to the state, or if you want to make some proposal for partnership to the tourism board.
Do we have a health inspector now?
We do, and restaurant and pool inspection is part of what the health inspector does, but not all of what she does.
Okay.
All right. Next item on the agenda is public comments. I don't believe we have any since there's nobody in the audience, with the exception of the legal woman voters representative. So, I'll move to item number twenty-one. Councilor Hanson?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that council adjourned.
Second.
Thank you. Motion and second by the Vice Mayor. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? We are adjourned.